Councilors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today, amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present, please be seated.
Point of order.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I just want to put on the record today my concern about...
What's the point of order?
I'm trying to put it on the record, Mr Chairman.
Right.
That is, that the council papers provided to us today, some of them are illegible, others have been unable to be properly downloaded due to their size, and it is extremely concerning that the materials for today's meeting are in the hundreds, if not thousands, of pages, but they've not been able to be easily or properly downloaded. So we've had repeated conversations with the CEO's office and IT to try and resolve this, and it is extremely difficult to access today's council papers.
Okay, thank you councillor Johnston, I'll raise it with a CCLO. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Cunningham and councillor Atwood will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Cunningham and Atwood be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? Councillor Cassidy.
Chair, I wish to advise that councillor Cook be absent and move that she be granted a leave of absence for today's meeting.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councilors, the minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,648th meeting held on Tuesday, the 18th of May 2021, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,648th meeting of council held on the 18th of May 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
The contrary, no.
No!
The ayes have it. Councilors, I draw to your attention the item on today's agenda, the public participation. We have two speakers today, or in reality three, but two different topics. Can I please invite Mrs Thelma Blucher to speak to us today about a dog-off-leash area in James Warner Park at Kangaroo Point? Welcome, Mrs Blucher. You have five minutes, you're welcome to stand or sit, whichever is your preference, and please, your time begins when you begin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors. My name is Thelma Blucher. I'm here about James Warner Park in the Gabba Ward and ask council to review the decision that it is a suitable dog-off-leash area. It is not. Do we want another of our beautiful parks bordering the Brisbane River fenced off to become a dog park? James Warner Park is located on the river, south of the Holman Street ferry terminal, and directly opposite the Eagle Street Restaurant precinct. James Warner Park is currently available to everyone, but councillor Sri wishes to fence it off so only dog owners will use it. Kangaroo Point is the most densely populated suburb in Brisbane, and a fenced dog park will reduce usable, open green space to over 7,000 local residents. Councillor Sri is suggesting the dog park to be located at the northern end of James Warner Park. The proposed drawings prove it is in fact the whole of James Warner Park that will be fenced. Here's what we're worried about. Congestion at the site, public nuisance, and no meaningful consultation and flawed opinion polling. Firstly, congestion. The Kangaroo Point Bike Way borders the proposed dog park. This path currently caters for pedestrians, cyclists, e-scooters, parents pushing prams, with peak use in excess of 450 people per hour. Usage will increase with the advent of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. The streets around this park are narrow, congested, and usually there is no parking available. Access to the proposed park by maintenance crew and bin collection can only be achieved by crossing the busy pathway, an accident waiting to happen. Public nuisance. To put it simply, it is just not the right location. Other dog parks around Brisbane are renowned for their unsightly appearance, and close residents complain of the noise, dust and smell. Bear in mind, James Warner Park is only 15 metres from people's homes. The flawed polling, councillor Sri conducted an online poll that gathered fewer than 250 votes in support of the dog park. We hastily organised a petition and gathered over 500 votes opposing the dog park. Councillor Sri's poll appeared flawed, his office admitted votes were duplicated, manipulated and removed, iCloud email addresses were blocked from the voting process, and the authentication process varied during the life of the poll. Yet councillor Sri chooses to ignore our numbers and has in fact told us he would not discuss this issue unless we had 2,000 signatures. No meaningful consultation. Councillor Sri will tell you there has been community consultation? We will tell you that the first and only time affected residents met with councillor Sri was on the day his poll closed, and that meeting happened to be arranged by us. Councillor Sri is required to determine the highest priority local project that is worthy of funding and satisfy himself of public support. How can his poll of less than 250 votes account for public support? Another dog park in this area will be the third in a two-kilometre radius. How many do we need? Currently, dog owners have over 30 kilometres of pathway in which to walk and run their dogs. The dogs are not excluded from James Warner Park, but for some reason councillor Sri is intent on locking away a lovely riverside park for the exclusive use of a very small minority interest group who are already very well catered for. This decision should be made by the whole community at the next election. Never again will there be a picnic, never again will there be toddlers and children playing, never again will James Warner Park be an open park. A dog park at James Warner Park is a mistake. Council, please review the suitability of this park.
Thank you, please take a seat, and I will call on councillor Davis, I believe. Councillor Davis, please respond.
Well, thank you Chair, and good afternoon, Mrs Blucher, and thank you, my name is Tracy Davis, I'm the acting Chair of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee here in council, and thank you for addressing us here today. Thank you also for the information that you and your neighbours have emailed, and I understand that you have received a response from the Lord Mayor and council CEO on the matter that you are talking to us about today. I would note that in councillor Sri's communications with residents, the councillor said that council agreed to install a dog-off-leash area in James Warner Park, but can I assure you and your neighbours that the proposed project is one that has been entirely initiated by your local councillor? In addition to projects funded by the Lord Mayor in the annual budget, all local councillors have a suburban enhancement fund where councillors are allocated funding to determine the highest priority projects in their local community. And whilst councillor Sri has determined that this particular project is high priority, I do hope that the councillor has listened very carefully to the things that you have shared with us here in the chamber today. I do understand also that councillor Sri has recommitted himself to funding a dog park in this location, but if that does remain the case after today, I would strongly urge councillor Sri to consider the neighbours of this park to determine the very best design and operation of the park so that it is sensitive to the needs of those that are living close by and to your fellow residents. I do understand that councillor Sri is conducting further consultation on the design of the area, and once again, I hope that he undertakes a process that really is inclusive and is reflective of what the views of the local community are, and in a sensitive way. Councilors do have a number of responsibilities to their local residents, and it can be a difficult balance. I know that in my own ward, there have been proposals where residents have supported and not supported particular projects, but I do the very best I can, and people in this chamber do the very best they can, to try and find a balance that gives the best outcome for the local community, even if they do not agree with the local councillor. But I do appreciate you coming into the chamber and providing a very detailed account of why you have concerns about this particular project going ahead in your local area. I want to thank you for addressing council, and I really do hope that your local councillor has heard what you've had to say and continues to engage with the local community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davis. Mrs Blucher, Mr Peers, we'll see to you. Councilors, I would also like to identify that two individuals will address us together, Mr Daniel Allen and Mr Edward Ross, will address the chamber on Trademart. Welcome, Mr Allen and Mr Ross. Excuse me, you have five minutes, which begins when you begin, you're welcome to stand or sit, and please proceed when you are ready.
No dramas. Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, it brings both myself and Ed great excitement to be here today. As two former carpenters by trade with a combined 15 years' experience on the tools, we consider ourselves to have played a small but very important part in building this fantastic city. However, during that journey, building houses around Brisbane, I lost one of my best mates to suicide, and it was during that time that Ed and I saw the need to provide a solution to the mental health crisis in this country at a social and a cultural level. So we found a Trademart. What is Trademart? It's a social enterprise workwear company by tradies for tradies. We make funky, eye-catching workwear designed to start conversations about mental health, and as we say, make an invisible issue impossible to ignore. When you wear a Trademart shirt, you take on a responsibility to act with empathy, show vulnerability, and always take a non-judgmental approach to the conversation. This is a grassroots movement that is starting conversations and driving the social and cultural shift that we believe is required to reduce the rates of suicide in this country. As a social enterprise, we obviously want to contribute to mental health organisations, but looking at the landscape, we don't believe that there was anything out there that was really speaking to tradies, blue collar and the working class. So not that we didn't have enough work on our hands already, we went and started our own charity called This Is A Conversation Starter Foundation, or TAX, which is the acronym for what we wear across the back of our shirts. We saw the issues being that we needed to remove the physical and financial barriers that exist that prevent anyone from accessing professional mental health support. The barriers that I'm referring to, making appointments to GPs, takes time out of a workday, getting on a mental health plan has its own stigmas associated with it, making an appointment with a psychologist and going and attending that appointment during the working hours that tradies work between 6am and 6pm, it's really not feasible. And the fact of the matter is, is that one hour with private sector mental health support costs about the same as about six cartons of beer. What would you choose? But we know that it's an unhealthy coping mechanism, Jonathan, I know you like that one. I don't know what else you're into. But it's, look, you know, obviously we're choosing a lot of unhealthy coping mechanisms, and we want to provide a solution, and not only that, we are providing the solution. In just under 11 months, our charity TAX has provided 2,100 contact hours of professional mental health support to tradies, truckies, blue collar workers and support networks of those people who would have otherwise fallen through the cracks. Now, pause for applause, I know. Now, the reality is, is that we've got traction, we've got wheels in motion, we consider ourselves to be providing a closed circle approach to the mental health conversation. Trademart's fun, it's easy for people to get on board with, it's very bright, and it's easy to start conversations. And on the back of that, we are providing a professional solution to actually provide the support that people need if and when they need it. Trademart is a social enterprise, our goal is to be the world's, you know, best social enterprise known for end-to-end impact, so we support She Rescue in Cambodia, we support Work Restart out of Burrell Prison out in Ipswich, and we also employ 10 individuals with intellectual or physical disabilities who pick and pack our shirts. Why are we here today? Because we think every single blue collar worker for councils around Queensland, but obviously particularly Brisbane, should be wearing Trademart. I think Brisbane City Council would be setting an incredible example by bringing on Trademart at a procurement level to be able to fit out every worker, obviously by having a really solid commercial partnership with council, would allow us to continue to do the work that we do. Because, yeah, I'm not going to beat around the bush, it's hard, and we are caning it at the moment. The next thing that we need is support for our charity, TAX. Now, we sell workwear to fund professional mental health support. We haven't really been asking for help, nor have we really had time to ask for help, because we've got a full-time task on our hands, but we do have proof in the pudding that this works, we've got the runs on the board that this works, and how fantastic would it be for Brisbane to be at the centre of a national mental health solution that is actually working? I think that's pretty bloody cool, I think we can do it together, and we'd love to see more of these shirts getting around Brisbane, they're already out here. I apologise that we haven't been here to meet sooner, because, you know, look at this wonderful setup, we're happy to be here, we thank you so much for your time, is there anything that I haven't asked for that I've missed?
That's pretty much it, mate.
Apologies, John, for the joke.
We've got to loosen it up a bit.
So, yeah, we're out there, we're caning it, we're putting our money where our mouth is, and, yeah, we'd like to see Brisbane get right behind us, because we reckon that we can really shake it up out there, so thank you very much for your time.
Rose, thank you. Can I call on councillor Marks to respond, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, for asking me to respond, I know it's an absolutely serious subject, but there has been a bit of laughter around the room, which is quite a nice to put a bit of lightning on such a serious subject. So, good afternoon to you both, Mrs Allen and Ross, as I mentioned before, thank you for taking time to address council on the work of what you do, the Trademart and TAX. It's good to see you again, we met previously at the Acaseridge Tafe Women's In Construction Breakfast that was there, which is when I first saw you and noticed your shirts and everything like that, and I have seen a few around, and I like particularly the bit that this is a conversation starter. So, when I was told that you were addressing the chamber about your organisation's work in addressing rates of blue collar suicide, I was enthusiastic about the chance to respond on behalf of the team Shunner Council. In my portfolio as Chair of City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee, I have the most field officers in the field, which is the work that is most applicable to you. But you may be interested to know, we have a range of strategies to support, promote and protect the mental health of our officers in council. We have an employee assistance programme, commonly known as EAP, it's a confidential support service available 24 hours for all officers and their immediate family members, in addition to short-term solution-focused advice and support on things like stress, relationships, anxiety, depression, nutrition, legal and financial issues, and they also act as a referral service to deal with longer-term issues. They also provide officers and their immediate family members visitation to a professional councillor at no cost. There is a dedicated managerial hotline as well, which supports our officers, and of course, in addition to the EAP, we have a range of courses to build the mental health capability of officers and leaders, and these courses range from a couple of hours to a couple of days to fill. So you've got Mental Health First Day, Mental Health Awareness, which is what you guys are talking about, Wellness Conversations for Leaders and Managing Stress and Responding to Challenging Interactions. So in the same way that your organisation recognises the different stresses places on field and tools-based workers, council also has a dedicated City Standards Mindfulness Team. Look, I want to thank you particularly for coming in and speaking to us today, as I said, there's a few of us here in the room who've had a very personal contact with regard to suicide, we're aware of what an emotional subject it is, and nobody wants to see anybody, and particularly our workmates, go through that, it's tough, someone very close to me is going through that at the moment, and she still struggles every day, so I understand where you're coming from. I want to continue to have a discussion with you both about how we can help you, whether that's through putting up sort of notices about what you do, so it's available to our workforce, of course. We also have, I'm not sure if you're aware, the council's corporate community and strategy procurement office, you may have been in touch with them, if not, I'm going to encourage you and give you the details to contact them, they're the ones that make the decisions about our corporate uniforms and that, and I have had a very brief conversation with the CEO and said I'd like to see our guys wearing something a little bit more colourful, a bit different, and I think, you know, that would be fabulous. So it's definitely a conversation that we plan to have as a council, so, and I know you've met the Lord Mayor, and he obviously supports what you're doing in your field as well, and having one of the largest workforces in the council, we certainly like to be the leaders in whatever we do, so we'll be here to help you as much as we can, I appreciate your time, thank you.
No, thank you for coming in, Mr Peers will look after you. Councilors, I draw to your attention question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Adaman.
My question is to the Chair of Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. There have been renewed calls for council's fifth green bridge to be placed east of the Story Bridge. Can you outline the history of this proposal and where the state government stands on this issue?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, what a fantastic question, councillor Adaman, through you, Chair, I'd be more than happy to lay out the facts on this issue and speak to the bizarre series of events that have taken place regarding Labour's call for a green bridge between Bulylimba and Tenerife. Now, Mr Chair, I can speak to this because the state government's study on this potential green bridge, finally, after five years, has been received by council over the weekend. I'm sure councillor Cook, who often watches on at home, will be pleased to learn what the Labour state government knew five years ago. Now, let's start at the beginning, Chair. Back in 2015, TMR commenced an investigation into an active transport bridge between Bulylimba and Tenerife. TMR then provided council with a draft report on the study with several conditions, because it was yet to be finalised. Then, after this point, radio silence. I wrote to Minister Bailey in September last year, asking him to provide his government's report to council's green bridges team. For several years, this report has been sought by our officers, but the state government has been holding on to the report very tightly indeed. But today, after five years, after numerous requests, after much political grandstanding from councillor Cook, I can finally reveal what the report contains and what indeed the purported bridge between Bulylimba and Tenerife would look like, according to the state government. If built, this bridge would certainly stand out on the Brisbane River, it would have a very significant clearance height. For reference, let's look at other bridges across the Brisbane River. The Corrillpa Bridge is nine metres, the Captain Cook Bridge is 12.7 metres, and the Goodwill Bridge is 13.25 metres. Now, what do you think the bridge would clear the river at, according to the state government? It would have a 30-metre clearance height, 30 metres. Do you know the other bridge along the Brisbane River that has a 30-metre clearance height? The Story Bridge, the Story Bridge! So TMR's modelling also indicates that the bridge climbs at an aggressive 5% grade, which is not particularly friendly to pedestrians or cyclists. I'm sure we now all have a visual in our head of this bridge, Chair. 30-metre clearance plus a 5% grade means that you wouldn't need a bike to get over this bridge, Chair, you would need a Sherpa. Just like the Gateway Bridge, this bridge would require regular pause points to allow users to recover from the punishing climb, and if residents of Bulylimba or Tenerife have a spare hour or two, I'm sure this bridge would make for a lovely walk over the Brisbane River. And while they might not need oxygen for the climb, they might start hyperventilating when they find out the cost over $200 million in 2016, and that's without considering property resumptions on either side. TMR also writes it has significant ramping that would be very unattractive to users. The bridge would involve massive ramps on either side of the river extending either down Oxford Street or parallel to Commercial Road, like the Riverside Expressway. The shadowing that this bridge would cause is another issue. Councillor Cook, like Monty Byrne, should tell her residents to take one last look at the sun, because if this bridge were built in her ward, it would plunge riverside residents into darkness. Unsurprisingly, Chair, TMR did not endorse the report themselves and noted that it was only, finally, provided to council for historical technical reference only. Now, I'm sure councillor Cook is pleased to know the outcome of her Labour government's own report, I know that just like us, Chair, she's been waiting for a while. Councillor Cook, Di Farmer and Grace Grace have all been big advocates for investigating a green bridge east of the Story Bridge. They began calling on council to do the feasibility report into a green bridge east of the Story Bridge, and while council's been only able to access this final report for the last few days, I'm surprised that the trio haven't read the contents of this report, considering it's been sitting with the state and collecting dust for five years now. There are so many questions that I have, Chair, wouldn't they have been able to access their own state government report for several years? Have they not read or at least been told the outcomes of the final report? Have they not asked Minister Bailey? Does she expect us to believe that cabinet ministers like Di Farmer and Grace Grace don't have access to their own government's report on the feasibility of this bridge? Now, Chair, putting this aside, it's always been a perplexing request to me to demand that council replicate work that's already been done by the state government. Why would council have started from scratch, expend public funds, resources and take six months of planning to complete an investigation that the state government have already done themselves? Chair, the answer is that Labour don't care about governments, they only care about politics. Can't councillor Cook, Di Farmer and Grace Grace wanted to stir people into action to get them excited about the prospects of a bridge that all along they knew was not feasible. So, Chair, I can confirm today that we will not be progressing a green bridge east of the Story Bridge, it would require enormous resources, there would be excessive ramping, and the impact to the community on either side of the river would simply be too great.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired, are there any further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's come to our attention that four electric buses have made their way to Brisbane as part of the city loop trial. Your LMP administration claims to buy local, yet these four buses were made overseas. At a time when we need to be boosting our own economy and supporting local jobs, you send millions of dollars overseas to build electric buses instead of awarding the contract to local manufacturers? Lord Mayor, why do you hate supporting local jobs and manufacturing?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, one of the things that I've been very proud of as Lord Mayor of this city is introducing our local bi-procurement policy, which is all about targeting 80% of council contracts to go with local business here in South East Queensland, and we've had incredible success with that. The success that sees, for example, our double-decker City Cats being designed and manufactured here in Brisbane, in Murray, in fact, using local workers, using local experience and technical ability, and, once again, we heard just last week, award-winning double-decker City Cats built by an award-winning company. Now, we heard this question from councillor Cassidy as though they had discovered something. It's funny, because the contract actually came through council, the contract came through council ages ago, and they've suddenly discovered something. This is sadly the lengths that the Labour opposition will go through to manufacture a complete beat-up of a story. Because what we're seeing here is not us manufacturing anything that we will own, we are seeing four buses out of a 1,200 bus fleet as part of a trial, a trial. So we haven't made the decision to purchase any of these buses. What we're doing is trialling the technology, and that was very clear right from the beginning. And so the way that councillor Cassidy has concocted this fake news story is quite incredible. He's implied that there was a local company standing ready to produce these buses for us. Well, in fact, when we went out to the open competitive tender, that same company that was mentioned in the media today did not bid. Why? Because they actually weren't manufacturing any electric buses. They had the opportunity to put in a tender proposal, yet they didn't, because they weren't building. because they weren't building any electric buses. And so we gave every opportunity for local companies to be part of this. But the reality is, in that tender process, no local companies were able to meet the specifications of the trial. But I do stress again, this is a trial. This is something where we're testing the technology before we make a decision to buy additional vehicles and buses. And so that is the right and responsible thing to do. But I would point out that when Councillor Cassidy was tweeting up a storm on his phone that was probably manufactured in the same place as these buses, I wonder if it struck him the hypocrisy of what he was saying? Because, you know, you would rightly say, well, of course, mobile phones are not made in Australia. There's really only one place where they're made, most of them. Yet, it's interesting. If you actually have a look at the statistics, about 70% of mobile phones coming into this country last year came from the place that we're mentioning here and 30% came from somewhere else. Do you know what percentage of electric buses in the world are manufactured in this place? It's not 70%. It's 99% of the world's electric buses are manufactured in the place that Councillor Cassidy is criticizing. And in fact, they're on track to have millions of electric buses on the streets. There are already over half a million on the streets. This is tried and tested technology that we're seeing from a market leader. Now, we would like to see a situation where local companies gear up their capacity to manufacture these electric buses, but we're not there yet. And what we've seen is the local market has moved quickly, but it is still in its infancy when it comes to the ability to gear up to produce large numbers of electric buses. We're seeing relatively small numbers in Australia, usually one-off or very small productions. But, as I said, when we went out to tender in this competitive and open way, the local company that was referred to didn't put in a tender because they didn't actually build any electric buses at that time. And so what we're going to do is, within a very few short weeks, we will see the very first fully electric bus service being introduced in Brisbane. And it's going to be fantastic. Why? Because this is about making sure we put to the test this technology that reduces emissions and delivers a more sustainable Brisbane.
Are there further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning Economic Development Committee, Councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, Brisbane has been part of an exciting announcement for some events. Dine BNE, Fridays in the City and the Ashes held at the Gabba. Could you outline how these events are contributing to our local economy and how residents and visitors can get involved?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councillor Hammond, for the question because it is so exciting. After coming off the back of the NRL Magic Round last weekend, which was just absolutely outstanding, Brisbane is buzzing and it just keeps getting better. 130,000 people at the Magic Round last weekend descended on Suncorp Stadium for three absolutely jam-packed days full of football and celebrations. I'm glad to see the leader of the opposition also enjoyed his evening there on Friday night as well, even though the Brisbane Broncos really didn't hold their head up very proudly. The Brisbane Truck Show welcomed over 30,000 visitors, Dumbarton 10,000, attracting 6,000 racegoers and the AFL bringing in a full house at the Gabba. So proving once again that Brisbane is the actual home of major events and sporting events in Australia. It's fantastic, on the other hand, to see also the hotels nearing capacity, our restaurants, pubs and clubs filled to the brim and our city streets bustling again. I spoke to a couple of people that were in the Queen Street Mall last Saturday before last for the NRL Magic Round and it was absolutely jam-packed. And that's what we want to see, foot traffic through the mall to make sure that we are getting our local businesses supported. Averaging 30% above the average for this time of the year in Queen Street Mall. That is pre-COVID, not just 2020. So our major events calendar this year is on track to deliver a $65 million economic boost to the city. And with more drawcard sporting events just around the corner for the remainder of 2021, it's looking very, very rosy. Of course, as Councillor Hammond mentioned, the Cricket, Queens, Australia's announcement that the first Test match of the Ashes series will be played in Brisbane again. Yay, as it always should be, a huge milestone in our international sporting calendar. The more major events we can attract to Brisbane, the more our local businesses will benefit and the better will be for the economic recovery of the city. But we have also been trying to entice our local residents and workers to come back into the city and support our businesses within the city heart. We've been gathering some serious momentum and it hopefully will not be slowing down anytime soon. Last week, I had the pleasure of joining Property Council to announce the latest campaign of Fridays in the city. And we know since the pandemic that Fridays just haven't been quite the same with a large portion of workers still on the split schedule between the home and the city office. So Property Council's office occupancy data tells us that people tend to opt to work from home on Mondays and Fridays, leaving our CBD noticeably quieter and occupancy rates stagnating at around 60%. What is unclear is how long is this going to last for and why there was working from home and the arguments that will continue around that as well. But we're certain that the home office won't be as fun as working in the city on Fridays anymore with tonnes of freebies and food discounts on offers. You don't need to convince me that Friday is the best day of the working week. Sometimes in this place, though, we do feel that Friday is not the end of our working week for some of us. But there's definitely a lot of Friday energy. We need to bring that back into the city and city workers come back to rediscover what's great about catching up with your workmates after work on a Friday afternoon. In response, we saw city restaurateurs and retailers being overwhelmingly positive. Forty-two properties jumped on board to participate in the campaign that goes through from last Friday to the 25th of June. Late-night shopping, bar hopping, fine dining restaurants, bar eats, things that entertain you during the day and right through into the night. Post Office Square has got free yoga, Pilates and boxing classes. Charter Hall's got ping-pong tables in their foyers. BSQ's got free coffee on arrival in a building foyer. You might all want to book in your meetings with the council officers on a Friday morning. There is live music in the mall, there is discounted parking. We know public transport usage is one of the issues and we're encouraging the state government to get on board and work with us and with the Property Council to consider free trips to further incentivize city workers to make the change and choose Fridays. Over the next month, I encourage you all to spread the word and ask your residents to grab their workmates and make the most of everything on offer. On top of that, if your residents get in quick, they might be able to double up on the Dine BNE City Programme, which has seen two weeks of incredible dining deals in the heart of the city. More than 80 meal deals available, 50 participating restaurants and bars and plenty to choose from, some fantastic offers from our very, very best restaurants. It's all about the opportunity for people to come and experience our world-class restaurants right here in our backyard. First of its kind anywhere in Australia, it's rounding out an action-packed month in May, but will continue on through the year. And it's all about making the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Deputy Mayor. Why did you refuse to allow a briefing by council's planning officers for all councils on significant changes to the city plan infrastructure plans prior to consideration at today's meeting?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do not uphold the premise of the question. I did not refuse any briefings with councillors, with council officers. Councillor Johnson sent a letter of request for a briefing. She got the reply yesterday afternoon, which said, you are more than welcome to have a briefing. Many changes in the LGIP. My officers were waiting for an email this morning from Councillor Johnson that never came for her briefing on the LGIP.
Further questions?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
The letter that Councillor Adams sent me yesterday said there is no briefing for councillors on the LGIP.
Thank you, this is not an opportunity for debate. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Acting Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, Councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, Brisbane's favourite sustainable living festival, Green Heart Fair, is back for another year. Can you outline how residents can get involved in this year's exciting lineup?
Point of order, Councillor McGlocklin.
Mr. Chair, could you ask Councillor Johnson to turn off her torch? It's very distracting to everybody else in the chamber.
Yeah, please, please don't shine lights on other councillors using torches. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, if it's going to be an argument about something silly, I'm not interested. What's your point of order?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. That light is actually shining straight in my eyes. I find it very difficult to concentrate.
Please, could we just, this is not really what this is about. Can we please just turn the torch off and move on? Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you, I'd like to thank Councillor Mackay for the question and I very much look forward to seeing Councillor Mackay on the north side of Brisbane on Sunday. Mr. Chair, the Shunah Council is not only building a better Brisbane, but also a greener Brisbane. And we are so excited that this Sunday, our hugely popular Green Heart Fair is back. Under Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinas' leadership, Brisbane remains Australia's largest carbon-neutral government and we are investing in projects to reduce our carbon footprint. Whether it's by increasing our solar power generation by over 10 times in 2016, by retrofitting our streetlights with energy-efficient lamps or by continuing to grow our green cover and natural habitat across the suburbs, we are seen as a leading government when it comes to taking practical action to create more sustainable community. We are also passionate about giving residents and community groups the tools they need to make an impact at home. Our much-loved Green Heart Fairs are a big part of that. And, Mr. Chair, the Shunah Council is bringing them back in 2021 after a hiatus last year. In many ways, the Green Heart Fair is more important than ever. With more people spending more time at home, we want to arm residents with the information and inspiration that they need to make more sustainable choices in their everyday life. Together, we can make a big difference. So, Mr. Chair, I warmly invite residents to come along to this year's Green Heart Fair in Chirmside in Seventh Brigade Park. At the fair, you will learn about innovative products and services, listen to presentations on green living, gardening and recycling and get practical tips in hands-on workshops. The fair is split into several theme zones, each offering different information to help you live more sustainably. The Waste Zone showcases rubbish trucks, recycling education stalls and workshops on composting, worm farms and creating an edible garden. The Green Home Zone will feature stalls on sustainable living and expert talks on creating a habitat garden, bees, chickens and kombucha and sourdough workshops. We'll also have presentations from the inspiring Yaz Gregalounis from World's Biggest Garage Sale about buying second-hand. Our Grow Zone is for the green thumbs and wannabe green thumbs of Brisbane, with experts on hand to answer your questions about gardening as well as tips on plant choice and choosing the right type of mulch. The Move for Less Outdoor Transport Area is all about taking transport to the next level, showcasing low-cost and sustainable transport options, including electric and hybrid vehicles and information on council's public and active transport initiatives. The Kids Eco Zone has a range of fun activities for our future environmental champions, including stalls from Australia Zoo, our council libraries, putt-putt and games, arts and crafts and make-your-own macrame plant holders and garden plant labels. Our council marquee provides residents with information about Brisbane's urban forest, waterways and invasive species, plus environmentally and kid-friendly nature play activities. The council marquee is also where you'll find our popular free native plant giveaway. We expect to hand out around 3,000 pots to be planted in backyards across Brisbane. On the main stage, there'll be live music to enjoy and performances for the kids, including Dirt Girl World and The Waste Warriors. There are also food trucks to suit all types of foodies. It's important for the Green Heart Fair to walk the talk and you will see sustainability embedded in just about everything you see at the fair. Our food vendors source their products locally where possible and all serveware is recyclable or compostable. We know some stall foods are recycling their cooking oil and composting all food waste. Some of our stalls will run off solar power and all generators on-site use biodiesel. Mr. Chair, it's great that events like Green Heart Fair are back and in action on the ground. Last year, we had to switch to a virtual fair. This included sustainable school holiday activities, eco-friendly gift ideas, sustainable living tips from local experts and exclusive discounts and giveaways on popular sustainable products. Around 14,000 people attended the virtual fair with our sustainability messages reaching over 210,000 people on social media. Whilst this was a wonderful engagement, I can't wait to be back at Seventh Brigade Park on Sunday, where, based on previous years, we're expecting around 20,000 visitors to join us. Mr. Chair, there is something for everyone at the Green Heart Fair. Kick-off is at nine o'clock, so come along and enjoy Brisbane's favourite sustainable living festival. Just another way that the Shunah Council is building a better, green-hearted Brisbane.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you've just claimed that there were no Australian electric buses that could operate and service council's requirements. That is just not true. Volgran, who manufactures buses right here in Brisbane, does make electric buses and they have been making buses for this council Eagle Farm since 2008. Bus Tech on the Gold Coast also makes electric buses. Yet you and your LMP administration snubbed these local manufacturers and ordered four electric buses from overseas for the city loop trial. Lord Mayor, why do you avoid buying local at a time when Brisbane's economy needs the support the most?
To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, I've already answered this question, but I'm happy to give some further insight. First of all, I pointed out that when we went out to tender, which did already come through this council for approval, which Labour councillors saw, I don't know if they were asleep or maybe reading a novel or some kind of political intrigue book. Look, I don't know. But it came through this council and then suddenly, all of this time later, they've had a light bulb come on and they're outraged that when we went out to tender, no Australian company could actually provide the buses that we needed. That's not wrong. That is the facts. And in fact, if Councillor Cassidy paid attention in council, Mr. Chair, rather than reading a novel each week, he might actually have noticed when this came through. Now, we know that Councillor Cassidy seems to have...
Councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
Seems to have a propensity to miss certain facts, but this is the fact. We went out for an open competitive tender. That tender was advertised to the entire bus manufacturing industry in Australia and guess what we received? We didn't receive a tender from an Australian company that could provide the buses that we needed. Now, what we're doing here, as I pointed out before, is not gearing up a manufacturing facility for a large number of buses. What we have done is we have leased four buses as part of a pilot. That's four buses out of 1,200. Now, if you believe what Councillor Cassidy is trying to peddle, suddenly we're acquiring an entire fleet of vehicles from overseas. That is not what's happened. We're simply having a small pilot project as proof of concept before we make a decision on future bus manufacturing. Now, we had a long-term arrangement with Volgran that came to its natural end. That arrangement at the Eagle Farm facility came to its natural end and we have advised the market that we're very interested going forward in local manufacturers that can provide a range of options to us for buses, including alternative powertrains such as electric buses and hydrogen buses potentially to supplement the existing fleet. So we've made that clear. But what we're going to do first, what we want to do first before making that longer-term production decision is to trial the latest technology here in Brisbane in our local conditions. And what better way to do that than right here on the CBD loop, which will be the first fully electric bus route in Brisbane and which is an exciting way to test this technology that is now world-leading. Now, as I said before, we know that the local manufacturers and industry are gearing up to meet this challenge, but we know that there's only a very small number of buses available. And those that were available at the time of our tender, which was two years ago, as Councillor Murphy pointed out, were not able to meet our requirements. As simple as that. So I suspect that as we go forward and we make a longer-term decision, that there will be local Australian manufacturing ability and assembly ability to provide this. And so it is a good thing that we have made this decision after putting the... And so it is a good thing that we have made this decision after putting the product to a test, which is exactly the responsible and right thing to do. But look, I really don't know, I really don't know what councillor Cassidy would expect us to do. If we run a tender and there's some vehicles that comply and there's some vehicles that don't comply, or there's some companies that don't even make such vehicles, what are we to do? What are we to do? If the local company could not actually manufacture a vehicle at the time we went out to tender, what are we to do? But I'll tell you what we'll continue to do. We'll continue to provide procurement opportunities for local business. Now, we know, and I mentioned Double Decker City Cats before, that is just one story of hundreds of good news stories right across the city where we're working with local business to support local jobs. So whether it's the City Cats or whether it's the construction of major projects or whether it's local upgrades, we will continue to support local business wherever possible.
Further questions? Councillor Landers.
Point of order.
Point of order. Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, I've just sent it. I seek leave to suspend standing orders to enable me to move an urgency motion condemning councillor Krista Adams for her failure to conduct a briefing for all councillors on changes to the City Plan 2014 infrastructure plans prior to today's council meeting.
Seconded.
So you have an urgency resolution? Councillor Johnston, is that what that is? It's an urgency resolution, yeah?
I seek leave to suspend standing orders.
All right, and it's seconded. Councillor Sri, can I ask you to stand when you second that, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. So it's been moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Sri. We have a resolution on the matter of urgency. It's been distributed as we speak. Councillor Johnston, three minutes to urgency, please. Please limit your, you have three minutes, please limit your comments to urgency.
Thank you. This is an urgent matter before us today because later in today's council meeting, we will be debating fairly significant changes to City Plan 2014. They affect the local government infrastructure plan and the local government long term plan. So the LGIP and the LTIP. Upon becoming aware of this matter coming to council, I immediately wrote to the CEO and the Lord Mayor last week requesting a briefing for all councillors. It's not just myself that is interested in this matter, but I presume all councillors are in how changes to City Plan impact on their wards. Late yesterday afternoon, the deputy mayor councillor Adams responded and she said the following. The Lord Mayor has asked that I respond on this occasion. The amendments to LGIP are minor in nature compared to the overall document and a full council briefing was determined not to be required. She goes on to state that there are some changes to Tennyson Ward, which in fact only say new things, doesn't say what's actually been cut. So she's provided misleading information in the letter as well.
Councillor Johnston, I appreciate you, much of what you said has been on the topic of urgency, but you're straying into the substance and also there will be an opportunity later in the meeting to debate these points. So can I just ask you to come back to urgency, please?
And it is incredibly important that all councillors are fully briefed on the matters before us today. Councillor Adams decided she did not want to provide a briefing for council officers. The CEO confirmed that in an email that there will be no briefing by council officers. And today we are asked to consider thousands of changes to City Plan 2014 without a briefing. Now, these are citywide changes that impact on every ward. So the big issue here is why councillor Adams personally determined that a full council briefing was not required, not required. And advised me, that's in her own words.
Yes, point of order to councillor Adams.
I know I haven't spoken on this, but the misrepresentation and falsehoods are continuing.
So I'll accept a misrepresentation. Councillor Johnston, you've got 35 seconds left. Please focus on urgency.
Yeah, thank you. And it's urgent because, and I quote again, even though, as she says, she hasn't spoken, so there can't be misrepresentation. Councillor Adams wrote back to me late last night and said, in her own writing, in her own words, "A full council briefing was determined not to be required." Now, there are hundreds and hundreds of pages of documentation. There are thousands of project changes, many affecting my ward but affecting everyone else's ward. And councillor Adams has refused to brief people prior to the meeting.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. The part that she left out is that a full briefing was offered to her, which she could have had this morning on Tennyson Ward.
Right, that's, we're moving on, we're having a vote.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, that was not a point of misrepresentation under the rules, but a personal attack on me.
No, okay, thank you.
And I would ask that you require councillor Adams to withdraw those comments.
No, we're moving on, we're having a vote. All right, on the matter of urgency, all those who believe the matter to be urgent, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Divided by councillor Johnston and I believe councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. All right, councillors, all those in favour of the urgency resolution, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 17 against.
The noes have it. Councillors, we will now return to question time. Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week marked Library and Information Week. Can you outline how our city celebrated and how libraries contribute positively to our communities?
Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, thank you councillor Landers for the question. And I know that you're a great supporter of libraries. Library and Information Week celebrates the wonderful work of librarians right across Australia and the important role libraries play in the community. Chair, only the Shrima Council can be trusted to protect and deliver the library services our communities need. For 17 years, the Shrima Council administration has invested millions of dollars into maintaining and upgrading libraries every single year since we've been in government. The Shrima Council has delivered 16 balanced budgets and through our strong economic management, we've delivered 23 new and upgraded libraries over the past 17 years. More importantly, Chair, we are doing this in an environmentally friendly way by delivering cleaner and greener libraries. Through you, Chair, I know councillor Landers' local community has greatly benefited from the new Bracken Ridge Library delivered last term, one of our greenest libraries to date with more than 200 solar panels, reducing carbon emissions by over 100 tonnes each year. Bracken Ridge Library is just one of the many libraries the Shrima Council has invested in renewable energy as part of the largest carbon neutral government in Australia, an achievement delivered by the Shrima Council. Over the past 17 years, we've installed hundreds of solar panels at facilities right across Brisbane. In fact, Chair, in the last 12 months, we've installed over 200 new solar panels across Ashgrove, Holland Park and Mitchelton libraries. But we're not about to stop work there. The Shrima Council is continuing our investment and more to be delivered over this term. The Shrima Council is investing $10 million to deliver a brand new library for Everton Park, as well as a new upgrade for Zylmya Library. And so, Chair, there really is no better friend of libraries than the Shrima Council. A stark contrast to Labor, who left behind a legacy of closing down libraries, even going so far as to take a wrecking ball to the Acacia Ridge Library, something which I know councillor Owen fought hard to put a stop to. But unfortunately, Labor did not heed councillor Owen or the residents' call to protect the library. The contrast could not be clearer, Chair.
All right, councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence. Councillor Howard.
Labor's policy is to demolish libraries. Our policy is to build and protect libraries. For 17 years, the Shrima Council administration has protected and managed Australia's largest library service. The Shrima Council has never closed a library and we will continue to deliver more library upgrades and new lifestyle and leisure opportunities for the residents of Brisbane. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the more than 300 hardworking library staff. They pour their heart and soul into their work, something which has never been made clearer than in the past year as they have gone above and beyond to keep our city moving forward. And so it was great to join residents from right across Brisbane last week in celebrating the importance of our libraries and the wonderful work of our librarians. Each year, we celebrate Library and Information Week with a special theme and this year's theme was adventure. Last week, residents from all over Brisbane came together to celebrate our libraries as places of adventure, whether it's searching for specific information, coming together to learn something new or browsing Australia's largest library collection at one of Brisbane City Council's 33 libraries. One of the key events of Library and Information Week every year is the National Simultaneous Storytime. Each year, a picture book by an Australian author and illustrator is selected for libraries, bookshops, schools and kindergartens across Australia to read simultaneously. This year's National Simultaneous Storybook was Philip Bunting's Give Me Some Space. And for an extra special experience, the Mount Coote Library hosted their book reading in the Sir Thomas Brisbane Planetarium, where projected images of the universe in the Cosmic Sky Dome followed the events of the story throughout the reading. And at Brisbane Square Library, Australia children's laureate Ursula Dubraskowski read Give Me Some Space as well as her own new picture book, The March of the Ants. Another fantastic program run by our libraries, Mr Chair, is the children's literacy sessions. These include the First Five Forever Children's Storytime, First Five Forever Babies, Books and Rhymes, First Five Forever Toddler Time and First Five Forever Stories and Signs. 832 in library events have been held so far this year with these sessions hosting more than 5,140 participants. Mr Chair, launching on the 1st of May was, of course, the ever popular 2021 Gold Star and Little Star Reading.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane is in the midst of an economic recovery. Right now, every level of government should be focused on supporting local jobs. But you and your LMP administration are all talk when it comes to buying local. Council needed four electric buses for the city loop trial. Volgrin already makes buses for this council right here in Brisbane and has the capacity to manufacture electric buses. They just delivered four electric buses in Victoria. BusTech on the Gold Coast can also manufacture electric buses. Both of these local manufacturers support hundreds of local jobs directly and indirectly. But this LMP administration decided to award the $3 million contract to an overseas company instead. Lord Mayor, when will you apologise to Brisbane workers for snubbing them?
To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I will never apologise for supporting Brisbane workers and Brisbane business because we have a record that is unparalleled when it comes to any council administration in the history of this city, in the history of this city. We are proud of our support for local business and local workers. And what we see on the other side of the chamber is councillors that just pay lip service to it but have never done a single thing to actually support local business, or local workers for that matter. They simply pay politics with important issues like this. We introduced the local preference policy. We introduced the target of having 80% of our contracts awarded to local business. And we are proud of the progress that we've made in increasing the number of contracts towards that target. And there have been hundreds of millions of dollars worth of contracts that have been awarded to local businesses, hundreds of millions of dollars of local contracts. And so what councillor Cassidy is doing here is misleading and deceptive and it's purely political. We can all see through it. And he has asked the same question in three different ways and I have answered it each time, but he doesn't listen to the answer because he doesn't want to understand. He just wants to keep making a political point and I think it's particularly disappointing. But we will continue to do what we can to support local business and we will continue to do what we can to be at the cutting edge as well when it comes to providing new technology that's sustainable technology. We are very proud of the fully electric Brisbane Metro project that is gearing up. And we know that that's a project that has been only criticised by Labor, only criticised. Apparently, apparently Labor is all for electric buses and electric vehicles, except when it comes to anything that's done by the LMP and then they find reasons to oppose it. They oppose the fully electric Brisbane Metro. They oppose the free city loop, which will be fully electric in just a few weeks' time. It is a shame that they've taken this opposition for opposition's sake approach, Mr Chair, because it is not good for the people of Brisbane that they behave this way and that they respond this way. Because what we're doing is we're moving forward to the future of transport in our city. We're moving forward to an electric fleet. We're moving forward, whether it's Brisbane Metro and the fully electric fleet there, or working out how we can best electrify or bring in alternative powertrains to our existing fleet of 1,200 buses. And I can report, for example, that so far this year, we have invested $648 million into contracts with local Brisbane business. 648 million. And what we have here is councillor Cassidy taking a very small contract in the scheme of things, a trial of four buses, which no local manufacturers could provide when we went out to tender, and he is trying to mislead the people of Brisbane. The people of Brisbane aren't dummies, councillor Cassidy. They can see through this political approach. But what they do see is the $648 million of investment that we're making in local business with local contracts. That makes a real difference. That supports workers, that supports jobs and that supports a brighter future for our city. That's about building a better Brisbane, yet we have Labor playing silly political games with important issues and it's a shame, Mr Chair.
Further questions?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. The Lord Mayor apologised to local bus manufacturers and their workforce for snubbing them in favour of overseas manufacturers for contracts to supply goods and services.
I have an urgency resolution proposed by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk. I believe it's being distributed at the moment. Councillor Cassidy, did you send that?
Yes.
All right, it'll be here in a moment, it'll be, all councillors will receive it. Councillor Cassidy, we'll reset your clock, you have three minutes to urgency, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is urgent because we have today witnessed this LMP administration snubbing local manufacturers for the production of electric buses for this city loop trial. This is urgent, Chair, because we're in the middle of an economic recovery when supporting local jobs and the local economy is paramount and this Lord Mayor is doing the exact opposite. He is sending bus contracts off to a company founded by the Chinese Communist Party. It's urgent, Chair, because we know that there were clearly options to buy local here in Brisbane and in South East Queensland. This electric bus contract could and should have been awarded to a local company and this is, Chair, a slap in the face of Brisbane workers.
Yeah, councillor Cassidy, just back to, okay, everybody calm down. Councillor Cassidy, just on urgency, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is urgent because this LMP council administration is ruining council's reputation here in Brisbane. Brisbane residents and workers are seeing this LMP administration, for who they truly are, selfish and unsupportive of local industry. It's urgent, Chair, because this decision has essentially now shut down bus building at Eagle Farm, where buses have been built for this council by local workers since 2008. And before that, they were built at Tuong, thanks to Jim Sawley, Maureen Hayes and Labor. It's urgent, Chair, because this month is the final month that a Brisbane-made bus is rolling off that production line into Brisbane's bus fleet. It'll be the end of a bi-local era for manufacturing here in Brisbane, all on this Lord Mayor's watch, Chair. watch, Chair. It's urgent because a local government should be doing everything, everything in its power to support local jobs, and buying buses from China, importing buses from overseas, is not doing that, Chair. It's urgent, Chair, that this Lord Mayor apologise, because we need to restore council's reputation with and relationship with local manufacturers and workers, and if not, they may not bid for future council contracts when they know they are not going to be supported by this Lord Mayor and LMP.
We'll now put the resolution on the matter of urgency. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
A division called by councillor Cassidy.
Division.
And councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. All councillors are present, we will proceed to a vote. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, and all those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Clarks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the nos have it, the voting being six in favour and eighteen against.
The nos have it. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair.
Your question, please.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McGlocklin. Councillor McGlocklin, council has recently reached a number of milestones with infrastructure projects, including the completion of lights at Montague Road and Victoria Street's West End. Can you outline how the Shriner Council is tackling congestion, getting residents home quicker and safer, improving safety for pedestrians and building and improving infrastructure across our city?
Councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I'll throw you, thank councillor Hutton for the question. Mr Chair, the ordinary business as usual for the Shriner Council administration is to plan for and deliver infrastructure upgrades for our residents, day in, day out. The Shriner administration has a proven track record in building a better Brisbane, and I am delighted that our team is delivering upgrades throughout the city and getting results to help Brisbane's residents get home both quicker and safer, be they in cars, on buses, commuting by bike or walking. Mr Chair, we all see congestion busting projects and safety enhancement projects being delivered all around our city every day. Two in particular are good examples of projects nearing completion over the next couple of weeks, which will be of benefit to all our residents, but there are many other projects as well. In West End, as mentioned in the question, the Montague Road-Victoria Street intersection upgrade is an important infrastructure improvement for the residents of West End and those travelling to and from work in the precinct. It is crucial that council continues to deliver important projects that start with looking at how the road network is working. This was an intersection built on a rise in the road, creating blind spots that were dangerous for pedestrians attempting to cross the increasingly busy road. In addition to this intersection upgrade, the speed limit was reduced to fifty kilometres an hour, as endorsed by the Speed Management Committee comprising the council, the police and Transport and Main Roads. Steps have been taken to prioritise accessibility for pedestrians and active transport users by making the footpaths wider and safer to tie in with the new road levels. The hump has been taken out, verge space has been allocated for new tree plantings, and integrating these with the new signalised pedestrian crossing, which will be turned on very soon. Councillor Street, to your question last week about trees in West End, I understand that there'll be six trees planted at this intersection, so space has been allocated as part of this project for the planting of several trees, six in total. Tulip Woods, Bennett Ashes in particular, so you'll be seeing new trees being planted there, to your question from last week. Other more significant aspects of this intersection upgrade have been the inclusion of an indented bus stop and a designated right-turn lane from Montague Road into Victoria Street. So, Mr Chair, this was more than just installing traffic lights at an intersection. While upgraded to a wider intersection with the addition of traffic lights and the new left-turn lane, the project has been undertaken without the need for property resumption, which is sometimes necessary when making network improvements, but fortunately not needed here in this project. Mr Chair, infrastructure upgrades are not just restricted to roads. Just across the river from City Hall, we're completing works on the Cultural Centre Riverwalk between the Carrilpa and Victoria Bridges. The Riverwalk was built in nineteen ninety-four and caters for over thirty thousand users each week, and was in need of significant rehabilitation to guarantee the safety of the structure underneath the boardwalk, as well as dealing with warping timber on the surface. These wooden panels have been progressively replaced with fibre-reinforced plastic, which is recycled plastic, I'm pleased to see that being used, which will provide long-term benefits for the Riverwalk and stand the test of time. The Riverwalk will be reopened to the public in time for the Brisbane Marathon, which will be held here next weekend, and its completion will be a welcome milestone for locals in the South Brisbane, as well as those who regularly make use of South Bank's facilities, and that's just about everybody in the city. The Riverwalk upgrade is a perfect example of how the Shriner administration is getting on with delivering the basics for our city by investing in safety and undertaking improvements in our active transport networks. As I said earlier, Mr Chair, right across Brisbane's suburbs, residents will see examples of the Shriner administration's commitment to building a better Brisbane. In our north, we have significant projects that are underway with the Hoyland Street and Norris Road upgrades in Bracken Ridge. Council is progressing well, with significant works taking place at the Gresham Street Bridge upgrade in Ash Grove. I'm also glad to see that in Brisbane's west, the significant maintenance work for Walter-Taylor Bridge is now complete, which will help to extend the bridge's lifespan and ensure ongoing safety is guaranteed for users. Mr Chair, the Shriner administration's investment in infrastructure across our city is a good example of our ongoing commitment to deliver the basics for Brisbane's residents and to get people home quicker and safer, whether it's intersection upgrades like in highly-populated areas like West End, or the Riverwalk, which complements our city's natural landmarks like the Brisbane River. We are aware that of the ongoing demands of a growing population, and we know ongoing infrastructure upgrades are required to keep up with the demand, and these are typical, Mr Chair, of the projects the Shriner administration is getting on with delivering.
Councillor McGlocklin, your time has expired, and that concludes question time. Councillors, we will proceed to the consideration of committee reports. The Establishment and Coordination Committee, please, to Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, seventeenth of May, twenty twenty-one, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the seventeenth of May, twenty twenty-one, be adopted. Is there any debate, to Lord Mayor?
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
First point of order, I would ask that items C and D are taken seriadum for debate and voting purposes.
C and D seriadum for both voting and debate?
Yes.
Yep.
And I have a second point of order.
Yes.
I seek the following further information to enable me to make a decision on the matters before us today. Mr Chairman, I seek information about the total number of projects that are being cut from the LGIP. I seek further information about the total number of projects that have been cut from the LTIP. I seek further information about the number of projects that have been moved between the LGIP and the LTIP. I seek the following information. The LTIP does not provide a timeframe between twenty twenty-six and a future date for the long-term infrastructure plan. What is the timeframe for delivery of projects that are now listed on the LTIP? I seek information about the following projects. There are no dollar figures attached to the information in the amendment to the LTIP, and I'm referring to Part Ten Other Plans, Proposed Infrastructure Amendment One A, Long-Term Infrastructure Plans. There are no dollar figures attached to any of the projects listed in the LTIP. I seek dollar figures for all of the projects listed in the LTIP, together with, as I've requested, the years that they will be delivered, between when and when would be helpful. I seek the following further information about the LTIP. Specifically, there are three pipe projects listed on page eighteen, which are Chelma, Pipe, Pipe, Pipe. I seek information about where that is located. In Chelma, there is a very significant reason for that. I seek the following further information about the pipe projects listed for Fairfield on page twenty-one. It says Fairfield Pipe, Fairfield-Yoronga Pipe, Fairfield-Yoronga Pipe. I'm seeking information about where those projects are located. There is a further project located at Graceville, Comma, Chelma, on page twenty-two. I'm seeking information about where that project is located. I'm seeking further following information about the LTIP. Specifically, on page thirty-one, there are a dozen to fifteen projects listed for Oxley. They say pipe projects. I'm seeking advice on where they are located. So that would be a street reference, if that makes it a little bit clearer for the Deputy Mayor. I'm seeking the further following information, which is the total value of the projects that have been put into the LTIP relating to the twenty-two Yoronga Stormwater Projects on pages forty-four and forty-five. I'm seeking the further following information about the project listed on page forty-seven. It says Bridge Street, Chelma. What is that project? What is actually listed under the LTIP? I'm seeking the further following information regarding Englefield Road, Oxley. It's listed on page forty-nine of the LTIP. What is the nature of the project or the scope of the project that is listed for Englefield Road, Oxley? I'm seeking further information also on page forty-nine relating to Fairfield Road. It's listed as Fairfield Road, Dutton Park, Rockleigh, Yorongpilly, Yoronga, Fairfield. It's also listed as Fairfield Road, McDowell, but I think that's a mistake. What is the nature of the project that is listed for Fairfield Road in those multiple suburbs? I'm seeking further information about the project that is listed for Honour Avenue in Sherwood, Chelma, Graceville, on the bottom of page fifty and the top of page fifty-one. What is the nature of that project that is listed on the LTIP? I'm seeking information about the listing for Ipswich Road through Maruka, Wollongaba and Anneli on page fifty-one. What is the nature of that project? I'm seeking information on the proposed Long Street East, Sherwood-Graceville project on page fifty-two of the LTIP. What is the nature of the project that is proposed? I'm seeking the further following information on page fifty-four of the LTIP relating to Oxley Road, Chelma, Oxley, Corinda, Graceville, Sherwood. What is the nature of the project, the scope of the project that is proposed under the LTIP for that listing? And my last question is, or my last information that I'm seeking is, both in the LGIP and the LTIP, how many outstanding backflow valve projects are listed for delivery in the LGIP and the LTIP? And can the Deputy Mayor please provide a list of those locations so they can be identified in the LGIP and the LTIP as they are not identified as such in the papers before us today?
Lord Mayor, can I call upon you to present your report? And can I also ask that when you speak to your report, please keep in mind that items C and D have been taken seriadum for both debate and voting, so can you please leave comments regarding those to a debate that will occur later in the day? To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just wanted to start off by referring to the developing situation at the moment with the fire at a power station in South East Queensland and the impact on approximately four hundred thousand homes and businesses across the city. It has been reported that the Callide Power Station has experienced a fire, and that a number of their turbines are out, and that has led to flow-on impacts right across the South East Queensland power network. Those impacts include impacts on public infrastructure such as intersections where the lights are out or flashing, and that is approximately three hundred and sixty intersections across Brisbane that are impacted by the power outage. So these are signalised intersections where the signals aren't functioning. At least seven of our libraries have been impacted. There were some temporary impacts on the contact centre, which is now back up and running again. But I simply wanted to point this situation out to residents and encourage them to stay safe. At this point in time, if it is at all possible to avoid travel on the road network, that would be a good thing. It is chaos out there with the number of intersections that are down at the moment, and so avoiding any unnecessary travel is a good thing to do. I know that most travel is not unnecessary, so please stay safe on the roads, and we'll certainly do our best to keep residents updated through the Brisbane Metropolitan Traffic Management Centre, and also through our call centre on the latest information as it comes into our possession on this matter. Obviously, we don't control the power network, but we are very interested in seeing this situation resolved for public safety reasons. While I'm talking power, I did want to refer to the lighting up of council assets as I do each week, and today we're lighting up council assets for the Red Shield Appeal, which was launched recently at the Brisbane Convention and Exhibition Centre. The Salvation Army, as we know, provides incredible and practical support to meet the social, emotional and material needs of people who are marginalised in society through poverty, health issues and/or unemployment. And the Red Shield Appeal is their key annual fundraising event. It's launched each year in the major capital cities in Australia, and they have ambitious targets in terms of fundraising. And as most charities are found, they are finding it difficult to fundraise compared to normal years due to the COVID situation and the, I guess, reduced stability to hold large functions. So we saw the breakfast function the other day with less than half of what they would normally be able to fit into a room as a result of COVID restrictions. But I can say that council, as well as other levels of government, will continue supporting the Red Shield Appeal, and we, as an organisation, are proud to be able to donate ten thousand dollars to the Red Shield Appeal each year on behalf of all of us. We'll be lighting up the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Tropical Dome and Red Cliff Place sculptures in red to show our support. Tomorrow marks National Sorry Day. This is a day that is commemorated on May twenty-sixth each year to acknowledge, remember and recognise members of the Stolen Generations and the mistreatment of our country's indigenous population through the forced removal of children from their families. This is something that I know has touched us all and something that we all support the recognition and acknowledgement of, and tomorrow there'll be events held, not only here, but also around Brisbane, to acknowledge the impact that these policies had on the Stolen Generation, and that is something that we do each year as a council in a bipartisan way to support and acknowledge. In recognition of National Sorry Day, the Tropical Dome at Mount Cotha, Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge, and the Red Cliff Place sculptures will be lit in black, yellow and red tomorrow night. Thursday is the start of Australia's Biggest Morning Tea, which is the annual community fundraiser organised by the Queensland Cancer Council, a fantastic organisation that raises vital funds for those impacted by cancer. And the Red Cliff Place sculptures and Victoria Bridge will be lit in yellow on Thursday night in support of Australia's Biggest Morning Tea. Thursday also marks LGBTI Domestic Violence Awareness Day. DV Connect and the Queensland Council for LGBTI Health are hosting an inaugural day of remembrance for LGBTI victims and survivors. The Story Bridge and Tropical Dome will be lit in rainbow colours on Thursday night in support of this important awareness campaign. I did want to reflect on the issue that was raised by councillor Cassidy in question time, and councillor Cassidy asked me to apologise. He does this from He does this from time to time. Apparently, I'm supposed to apologise for things that apparently I have done. But I really do think when you look at the facts here, it is councillor Cassidy that should be apologising. When will councillor Cassidy apologise for trying to mislead the people of Brisbane on the nature of this bus trial? When will councillor Cassidy admit that he was asleep at the wheel when this contract came through council in October last year? Suddenly sort of wakes up today and puts forward an urgency motion, yet this contract came through and was reported to this council in October last year. And in fact, the buses are in Brisbane. They've arrived. They're here. They're going to hit the streets shortly and suddenly councillor Cassidy thinks this is an urgent issue. So, and I think that councillor Cassidy needs to apologise to the local bus companies for misrepresenting their role in the tender process. Because he mentioned two companies specifically, both of whom did not submit a proposal in our tender process. Why? Because they couldn't meet the requirements. That was their choice. It wasn't our decision to exclude them. They did not put in a proposal. So councillor Cassidy needs to apologise for completely misrepresenting this situation and apologising for not supporting more sustainable transport in our city through either this electric bus trial or through the Brisbane Metro, which he continues to oppose. It is very disappointing, Mr. Chair, the approach that is taken by this opposition leader. Item A is the annual operational plan and quarterly report for March 2021. And it reflects once again the strong and responsible management of the city's finances and the strong delivery of projects and improvements right across Brisbane, across the suburbs of Brisbane, creating a better Brisbane and better suburbs. It also highlights some important points here, which is the support, the type of support that council has been able to provide during the difficult period of COVID. Now, there are very much positive signs now showing in the economy, both across Australia and locally here in Brisbane and South East Queensland. Now, we're not entirely out of the woods, but the bounce back in Australia and in particular in Brisbane has been virtually unparalleled anywhere in the world. We had at certain times diabolical predictions of unemployment rates of up to 15%. Yet now, we've got a prediction that unemployment will be less than 5% in the near future. That is a positive thing and it's positive to see strong economic growth locally and across the economy. Last year was obviously a challenging year and going across to the current financial year. And there were impacts on council's revenues and we've pointed that out many times before. And we also stepped up and for example, providing the special COVID rebate and also the K S D rebate, special rebate, a combined total of some $31 million of relief for the ratepayers of Brisbane. A relief package which saw for the very first time in the city's history, rates actually going down in a financial year. The average residential rate bill this financial year went down compared to the year before. And that's because of the $31 million of investment that we made in providing those rebates. That's because we did the responsible thing in running a responsible budget.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Please have a second. It's been, an extension of time has been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Murphy. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor, further 10 minutes.
Thank you to the chamber. That's also because, Mr. Chair, that we had to make some challenging decisions, like the pause in curbside collection. Something which Labour talks about repeatedly, but one thing they forget is where that money was reinvested. Where did it go councillor Mackay? Did it go into someone's back pocket? Well, yes, it did. It went into the back pocket of clubs and community groups and sporting organisations. It went to help them reduce their bills. There was more than $3 million in grants paid to community groups during COVID to help them with their bills. And then there was an incredible level of support, something like $18 million that went into supporting local business in a time of need. And that included things like waiving all business permit fees and licence fees and rents right across the city for business. Footpath dining charges wiped, food business licences wiped, advertising fees wiped, application fees wiped. All of that money that was saved through curbside collection went straight back to the community. Straight back to the community. And so, and so what we see here is the helpful Labour opposition encouraging people to get into illegal dumping. Because that's effectively what they are doing. And if you have a look, if you have a look.
Councillors, no. Lord Mayor.
If you have a look at the areas where the illegal dumping is the highest, it's in those labour wards where their councillors have been saying, you know what? Someone else's fault, someone else's fault. You can do what you want. Yeah, it's that terrible, Lord Mayor, you know, just put your stuff out on the curb. And, and I think it's disgraceful and reprehensible that they would take this approach in a time of crisis. In a time when we have paused curbside collection to help the people of Brisbane.
Point of order councillor Griffiths.
I actually find the Lord Mayor's comments really distasteful and untrue. I don't believe he can back it up.
That's not a point of order.
I request he withdraw them.
No, no, Lord Mayor, please continue.
It's just a false accusation.
Mr. Chair, I've been asked for proof and I'm more than happy to. Because we are aware, Mr. Chair, of multiple occasions where Labour councillors, including the so-called leader of the opposition, have gone to do a media stunt at a site of illegally dumped material. So the cameras turn up, councillor Cassidy gets all angry and says, it's the L M P's fault that people illegally dump. But then what does he do? Does he report it to council to get it cleaned up? No, no, he doesn't. He doesn't. He walks away, he turns his back because apparently it's someone else's fault. And if you have a look at some specific examples, councillor Cassidy's curbside stunt on the 8th of April in Raoul Street, Zilmia. He found the items, he stood there, used it as a prop and then walked away, never reporting the illegal dumping so that it could be cleaned up. Guess who reported it? Us, we did. We, we did the right thing. But you know what? Councillor Cassidy, once the cameras are off, doesn't care, doesn't care, doesn't do his job and thereby facilitating people that are doing the wrong thing. And facilitating these issues not being cleaned up. We also saw on the 11th of February, where he pulled another illegal dumping media stunt at Zilmia, but did not report the material that had been dumped. And you know who reported it? Councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, the chair of City Standards, because she cares about city standards. She cares. She's the one that is out there taking the lead from the front in the field. And I am proud of our councillors like councillor Marks that do the right thing. Councillor Cassidy and his team should be ashamed of themselves for the way that they've approached this issue. Absolutely ashamed of themselves. Because yes, there were some challenging decisions to be made, like pausing curbside collection, but all of that money went straight back into the community, went straight back into the community groups, the supporting groups, supporting local business. And that has been a really good thing and something that we should all be proud of rather than playing petty political games with. Now, another thing that I would point out in relation to these two financial documents that are here in front of us, both the quarterly report and the third budget review, is that we made a deliberate decision to run a surplus budget and a surplus budget with a relatively small surplus, but one that would give us a buffer zone in case the situation deteriorated further. And I did want to point out again that that is exactly what happened. Because from the time when the budget was released in June last year, the income coming into this council has deteriorated further than what we anticipated. And so we saw an initial surplus of $195 million predicted. But we're seeing in the budget review and the quarterly financial review a further confirmation that that is now down to less than $100 million. And so there's been a further deterioration in the income coming into council. So we made the right decision to have that small surplus, that buffer zone. We knew that things would evolve quickly. We knew that the situation would evolve quickly. And so that buffer zone has enabled us to get through a very difficult year and to provide the support to the community and local business that we've been able to do. So it was the right thing to do. And I remember distinctly, what did councillor Cassidy say about the surplus? He said it was bizarre. It was bizarre that any government would try and get a surplus or a balanced budget. I think that says everything you need to know about the Labour team. It is bizarre. They think it's bizarre that you would run a balanced budget. I wonder, I wonder how councillor Cassidy runs his household budget. Does he go for a surplus or a deficit? Does the credit card get bigger and bigger each year? Is that what happens? I wonder.
All right, all right, we've all had some fun. We've all had fun, back on topic please.
We're talking about, we're talking about public funds here and we strive always to run a balanced budget. Not with a massive surplus. This is not about storing up any kind of massive surplus. This is about making sure that our income and our expenditure match. That's the right way to run a budget. And we will continue to do that. And to have that buffer zone has been important this year because it's allowed us to provide support for our community during times of needs. And so, Mr. Chair, I commend these financial reports to the chamber. They are evidence of how we've been investing in the community, building infrastructure, supporting local jobs and supporting community groups and small business as well. Item B is the Information and Communications Technology Policy, ICT 23, and the Information Management and Record Keeping Policy. These items relate to updates of council's ICT 22 and ICT 23 policies. The purpose of the ICT 22 policy is to establish council's strategic direction and framework for the coordination and management and use of ICT products and services. It has been updated significantly. We've continued focus on a centre-led approach to ICT spending and decision-making. ICT 23 is a policy that has been renamed from Information Management and Record Keeping Policy to Information Asset and Record Keeping Policy to reflect the amendments made in the review. The policy reflects council's focus on managing information as an asset through the lifecycle management, lifecycle management, sorry, and updates are in line with legislation and in accordance with council's information and security classification process. Through to item E, which is the major amendment to the city plan, Eight Mile Plains Neighbourhood Plan. Obviously, this planning work commenced as part of our gearing up for the Brisbane Metro project. Very exciting project which will help transform our city's public transport system with the turn-up-and-go fully electric service, which we're very proud of and which is really gearing up. The planned area is well located close to public transport, including the proposed Brisbane Metro Station and also between major motorways as well. There's a significant employment cluster established in the Brisbane Technology Park, the Garden City Office Park and the Freeway Office Park. And the remainder of the planned area is predominantly low-rise housing along that precinct. The draft plan aims to support the ongoing development of advanced technology and manufacturing businesses in Brisbane, particularly in the Technology Park precinct, and also facilitate residential growth close to well-located public transport facilities such as the Brisbane Metro Station. So the draft neighbourhood plan is being presented for endorsement to proceed to the first state interest review prior to proceeding to consultation later this year. I think that's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Right, further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these items, A, B, E and F before us today. And just ask that item F be, sorry, item E be taken seriatum for voting.
Item E will be taken seriatum for voting.
Yes, thanks very much, Chair.
Please proceed.
Clause A, the annual operation plan progress and quarterly financial report for the period ending March 2021. The purpose of this report, of course, is to update us all and the public on the progress that has been made so far in the council budget. And it's bad news for ratepayers, Chair. At three-quarters of the way through this budget, through this financial year, nearly every project or programme is lagging behind. The word rephased appears 141 times. The term timing of delivery is mentioned 31 times. The phrases that are missing, Chair, are due to this incompetent L M P administration. And it's clear the L M P can't be trusted with residents' money. Nearly every programme is underspent on capital and expenses. In the clean, green, sustainable Brisbane, 39% of the capital budget has been spent at 75% of the way through the budget. Infrastructure for Brisbane, only 50% of the capital has been spent and only 30% of the future Brisbane budget has been expended. Parks maintenance has been cut by $6.4 million. Community facilities planning has been cut by $2.1 million this year. And $27 million has been cut from resurfacing and bridge and culvert works in our outer suburbs. And $8 million in local traffic improvements cut from the 2020-2021 financial year, Chair. This is a litany of bad financial management and poor project planning by this Lord Mayor and the L M P. The only thing that has increased is the money that council has received from developers. So while rates continue to go up and services continue to go down, Chair, the L M P Lord Mayor continues to prioritise developers over residents. Clause B, Chair, which is the ICT Information and Communications Technology Policy. This, this plus the Information Management and Record Keeping Policy, two policies. The ICT policy was first introduced in 2009 and was reviewed in 2015 with no changes, was due for another review in 2018. But we're only seeing a proposed amendment document before us today, three years too late. The review for the Information Management and Record Keeping Policy was also due for review three years ago. So I think the Lord Mayor needs to check his watch, Chair. He also needs a history lesson because what this report lacks in detail is that council's approach to ICT spending and decision-making very rarely delivers the best value investments. We all know what happened when council awarded that IT contract to Technology One for its cloud platform. A $60 million blowout, that's almost 10 years worth of curbside collections, Chair. And how about the outsourcing of ICT to HCL, which cost 55 people in council their jobs? It led to wage theft, discrimination and exploitation of IT contract staff on this administration's watch. These are the opposite of best value investments, as mentioned in this report, Chair. They weren't good deals for ratepayers and they weren't good deals for workers. We won't be opposing these policies today, Chair. We certainly don't support modern-day slavery and huge cost blowouts on this L M P administration's watch. Clause E, which is the major amendment to the city plan for the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan. Council previously resolved to include the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan on 26th of March 2019. The draft that we have before us today is going to the state government, the Minister for State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning for the State Interest Review and then out for community consultation. We support the item going to the state interest check and community consultation and we reserve our opinion of the plan pending that feedback and how that feedback is incorporated into the final plan. We do, however, hold grave concerns for community consultation, given the L M P's track record, Chair. I certainly hope that the residents in the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan I certainly hope that the residents in the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan area are listened to and their views are taken seriously. We certainly hope they're not berated, ignored, and patronised by this LMP administration, like so many other residents have been for trying to speak out, whether that's at New Farm, Spring Hill, or the Inogra Creek area, Chair. Clause F is the third budget review, the final item in this lot here. And again, we see basic work in the suburbs has been delayed or cut, even though some of this work has been receiving funding from other levels of government. So another budget review, Chair, and another piece of neglect from this LMP Lord Mayor for our suburbs. And you know why, Chair? Because suburban upgrades don't stroke this Lord Mayor's ego. They don't get him on TV, they don't get his face on glossy brochures. And if it's not newsworthy, Chair, this LMP Lord Mayor doesn't want to know about it. Almost $3.5 million for active transport infrastructure has been pushed back a year. $920,000 in bikeway works funded by a state government grant to help council boost the local economy has been pushed out to next financial year. $11 million in capital has been cut from the accessible bus stop programme, and spending on active school travel and safer paths for seniors has been cut. Over $3 million in intersection upgrades in the suburbs like Nunda and West End are delayed. Millions of dollars allocated for roadworks under the Better Roads for Brisbane scheme at Bracken Ridge, Ransom, Mount Crevat East, and Rochedale have been delayed, and over $1 million in road resurfacing works have been pushed back to, Chair. Even spending, now it's a litany of underspending in the suburbs, Chair, but even spending on inner-city projects like the Green Bridges, which were allegedly being fast-tracked, have been held up, and $7 million in funding now has been pushed back to next year. Nearly $2 million for new city cats has been delayed, Chair, and even projects that this LMP Lord Mayor hangs his hat on are being delayed. At a time when we need to support local jobs and local industry and boost Brisbane's economy, we see more delays and more cuts on Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner's watch. This review really showcases the LMP's inconsistency, Chair, when it comes to Brisbane. Let's take a look at the Brisbane Metro project. The federal government was supposed to hand over $80 million for this project this financial year, but that's been put off again to next financial year, and perhaps they took a closer look at the project, Chair, and realised how poorly planned it has been from the start, and now thinking twice about their support. The allocation for the Brisbane Metro operational readiness has also been pushed back by a year, not a good sign for that project which has already been plagued by delays and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of cost blowouts. This review is riddled with examples of poor management and planning by the LMP Chair. The much-toted spending on Koala Research has been cut. $2.5 million on rehabilitation of parkland and sports and recreation land has been put off to next year. Works on Nudji Recreation Reserve in Wallytate Park are delayed to next year, as well as maintenance in suburban parks. The Bushland Acquisition Programme has had a boost in revenue, Chair, but a reduction in capital spending. Surprise, surprise. Drainage construction works have been delayed. Almost $1 million in the village precinct projects has been pushed out to next year. Spending on business and local economy support and the Economic Recovery Task Force has been cut. But the big-ticket item is a $133 million expenditure for an unexpected purchase of the Sherwood Bus Depot, buying back that bus depot that we used to own after selling it for just $21 million and renting it out for more than a decade, Chair. There is something that hasn't been cut, though, Chair. There is an item that hasn't been cut. It's obscene, but it is not entirely surprising. It's this LMP Lord Mayor's advertising budget. We see every single dollar allocated to his self-promotion and advertising spend spent on time, every time, Chair. I'm sure Brisbane residents would love to see a cut to the $5.2 million being spent on the Living in Brisbane newsletters with the Lord Mayor's face all over them. And what we're not seeing as well, Chair, is a cut to this LMP Lord Mayor's $100,000 unaudited, unaccountable allowance. But we do see cuts to curbside collection, Chair, and Brisbane residents are angry.
Further speakers, councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item E of the E and C report on the Eight Mile Plains Neighbourhood Plan. Mr Chair, I'd like to start by congratulating and commending the work of Shrinna Council in delivering on the Eight Mile Plains Neighbourhood Plan. This is a blueprint that achieves good balance between, that guarantees the future growth of the area while keeping the enviable lifestyle that local residents will continue to enjoy. Eight Mile Plains is part of Brisbane's new global precinct. It is strategically located at the junction between South East Freeway, Gateway, and Logan Road. Despite all the stories about where the name Eight Mile Plains is coming from, Eight Mile Plains is 20 minutes to the city, 25 minutes to the airport, and 45 minutes to the Gold Coast. The metro depot and the terminal station are both within this neighbourhood plan. This significant, in fact probably the biggest investment in Brisbane's public transport history, not only going to create jobs and business opportunities, but will change people's travel behaviour forever. Eight Mile Plains is also the home to Brisbane's Technology Park, RSCQ, and a number of office parks. It is an important employment hub for Brisbane and an economic powerhouse for Brisbane's future. Eight Mile Plains is also blessed with a significant multicultural religious precinct. Whether it's the Korean church, Chinese Taoist temple, Bosnian mosque, or Sikh temple, Eight Mile Plains showcases how attractive and inclusive Brisbane is. This neighbourhood plan reinforces the unique characteristics of Eight Mile Plains and the strength of transport convenience, employment potential, vibrant multiculturalism, and a blissful environment. But I must admit, there is still complaint from the residents about this neighbourhood plan. The enterprising residents of Eight Mile Plains, they come and complain to me about not being included in this neighbourhood plan. So, Mr Chair, I would like to once again congratulate the Shrinna Council administration in delivering on this neighbourhood plan that is future-proofing our local suburbs and has a wider economic impact to our city. I comment the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on items A, B, and F. And I just want to start with item B, the Information and Communications Technology I noted in this speech the Lord Mayor described this as setting the strategic direction for council. If that is the purpose of the policy before us today, then it has absolutely failed in its intention. I just want to run through a few of the issues, some of which I've raised in this chamber many times previously. But I want to start with the fact that councillors who log jobs for their residents to have them fixed, repaired, and so on, compromises about 25% of all jobs that are registered with council for carrying out. We still do not have technology that connects us into council. There is a person who sits in the call centre, and that person retypes the information that we log electronically into our council-provided computer systems. Our council-provided computer systems in the ward offices do not integrate with council software. So as a result, we have people performing a manual task, and it is leading to significant ongoing problems. Now, I've raised that many times in this chamber. You would think, with the billions of dollars that council spends on software acquisition, that 25% of all of its customer service obligations perhaps should make an effort to make sure that the IT systems that council has supports their effective integration into council core business. That has not happened. I'm still waiting. Two, the computers. Thursday and Friday last week, our computers didn't work. This is a regular occurrence in the ward office. Thursday, they were down for half a day. Friday, they were down for hours because the council papers were so large they could not be downloaded. This required multiple call-outs to IT, multiple visits by IT, and hours and hours of time that my staff and I do not have trying to rectify inadequate computer support for our ward offices. And finally, the best one. And remember, this is the Lord Mayor saying he wants to be really strategic about the direction of IT services. I just want to refer to council's rollout of the new phone system. So last week, we were advised that council was installing a new phone system in the ward office. We were told there would be one incoming line. If it was not answered within 20 seconds, it would automatically divert to voicemail. No one else in the office could pick up a call from any other phone. Now, our offices, and I'm sure we all do things slightly differently, but effectively our offices have multiple phone lines at the moment, and staff can pick them up at any phone depending on what they are doing. I'm sure, like most other offices, we have a huge amount of foot traffic, we have emails, we have phone calls, and we're not just sitting there waiting like some receptionists to answer the phone. The fact that council thought it was okay for the phones to ring for 20 seconds and then divert to voicemail shows how hopeless this scoping of the project has been, the delivery of the project, and the installation of the project. It was immediately apparent to me in the briefing note that this system was not fit for purpose. It's not been explained to me why it's being done. I believe it may be because Cisco Systems, we currently use, are slightly more expensive than the Microsoft Team solution that council is going to put in. But no one conducted, to my knowledge, any trials in any ward offices. No one. So it's okay for the 7,000 or 8,000 council officers who have a dedicated phone number attached to them, who don't perform a call-centre-type function in their offices. What I don't understand, and perhaps councillor Adam Allen will stand up and tell us if he's responsible for this, is what ward office trials were done to ensure that this system was appropriate for the ward office environment. Remember, 25% of all council's customer service obligations come through ward offices. Now, apparently I wasn't Robinson Crusoe in raising this. So good on whoever it was that also spoke up, because this has been botched, absolutely botched, and this is what happens when council refuses to work collaboratively with councillors and ward officers to deliver on proper IT support for our ward offices. Finally, on the third budget review. Like councillor Cassidy, it is quite shocking to read through the third budget review, you know, this time round. Often, often they're bad. Often there's just cuts, rollovers, delays, but this is across the board, across the board. So we just have to remember that this administration has a huge majority. They've got multiple chairpeople, they've got 8,000, 9,000 council officers at their disposal, they've got a budget of $3 billion, and they can't even resurface streets. They've been unable to deliver on their stormwater budget, they've been unable to deliver on parks projects, they've been unable to deliver on village precinct projects, they've been unable to deliver on, look, every single area. Drainage is a massive one. There's a huge problem with drainage. There are both carryovers and cuts to drainage projects. It's being rolled over simply because they cannot get the work done. This is your job, through you, Mr Chairman. It is the job of the chairs to make sure that the budget is carried out within their departments. What is going so wrong? These things aren't even rolling over from this year to next year. Some of them are actually rolling over two years in advance. Now, we don't even know if they'll appear in the budget next year, but there are a whole host of issues in here that are just a reflection of the grossly inadequate financial management of this LMP administration. They've even failed to deliver on their long-term transport planning project. So there's been cuts there. $3.2 million cut. It's just a phenomenal amount of money. That's on long-term planning for our city. So they can't even, whatever's going on, okay, maybe you can't get enough people to put bitumen on the road, but are there really not enough engineers and town planners out there to help us with our long-term planning? I really don't think that's the case. There is millions of dollars being cut right across the board. There are blowouts, massive blowouts, and I'm just looking at the city cat and ferry operating subsidies. We know that's because the city cats don't work properly, so they're too noisy and there's problems, so there's that. There's all the other ferries that are on hold somewhere in Dry Dock, who knows if they're being fixed or if they're ever going to come back into service. So we just don't know what this administration is doing. There's less people on our buses, very clearly, millions of dollars in decreases in revenue there. We're seeing a $2.5 million cuts in the bridges and culvert programme. It looks like it's a huge cut to the congestion busting projects, oh yeah, Ipswich Road and Cracknell Road, that was a good one. You offer a few constructive solutions on how you can improve a project for pedestrians as well as cars, and this administration cuts it. Councillor McLachlan, with no authority to do so, stands up in this chamber and stomps his feet and goes, no, we're not doing it. And he cancelled it. So it's listed, interestingly enough, in the L-Gip to be done in a future year, but the funding is being cut in the budget. So how do you put a project which is supposed to be delivered in your L-Gip but you don't actually reallocate your funding over to a future year? That's a cut. It's not rolling over from one year to the next, it's just been cut. But as councillor Cassidy noted, and I just have to say, there's quite a lot of other stuff, but I do just have to finish on the Sherwood Bus Depot. $133 million down the toilet because of the poor financial management of this council administration. They are playing loose and fast with ratepayers' thumbs. There is no way, no way, we should be spending $133 million buying back an asset that we've already purchased previously, that we've paid commercial rent for, and then we're now going to sell it again to the CBIC and pay probably even more commercial rent for. This is a shell game with ratepayers' money, and it is an inappropriate use of council funds. It is a waste of money, and $133 million could fix almost every single project in Tennyson Ward, and probably councillor Griffith's Ward, and probably councillor Shrunks' Ward, and probably councillor Cummings' Ward. Councillor Sri's got more problems, he might not, might be enough for him, but that's a huge amount of money, and this administration is wasting it on a financial transaction that is unnecessary and is simply a matter of transferring an asset to the CBIC where we're going to pay even more money, more money. We'll probably get locked into a 20-year or 30-year lease with the CBIC at the top commercial market rate. I'll be fascinated to see that lease when it comes through, just to see what it is.
Councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Landis.
Point of order, Chair. Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that this council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Welcome back, everybody. Further speakers on the E and C report, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item, excuse me, E, which is the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Draft Neighbourhood Plan. This is a plan that has been a little long while in the making because we did have a bit of a blip year last year. But thank you, councillor Huang, for your comments, and I think what you said was exactly right. This is about making sure we continue to support the operations of the business opportunities and the employment that we have in the Eight Mile Plains Gateway, considering we are so close to the new metro station, but you also have the Brisbane Technology Park, which is such a very important part of this area, to make sure we have industrial, line, industry, and all the technology into the future. It runs along the crossover between the gateway and the Pacific Motorway, again, very highly centred for a transport node as well. And of course, there's other large, important spaces on this map like the continued established places. like the continued established places of worship on Logan Miller's and Underwood Road as well. So what we see is development of small-scale retail within the Technology Park to improve the amenity. We retain the existing low-density residential house in most of the planned area, but make sure we also give housing choice in locations near schools, services, employment, and public transport infrastructure. The idea is that we can attract and retain advanced technology in manufacturing industry at key locations to support employment growth within the study area as well. So the community planning team meetings, information kiosks, newsletters, e-burs, interactive mapping, and online surveys all were released for community consultations from the 18th of November to the 16th of December, and there were 65 comments in response with a range of matters. And once the drop to the plan will be harder to city plan and used to guide the assessment in this very important area in Brisbane.
Further speakers, further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items A, F, and if I get to it, item B. Now, quickly, item A is the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report for March 2021, or to March 2021. The council's annual operating progress plan and quarterly report reflects our financial and operational results for the period ended 26th of March 2021, and is a point-in-time report, as we often say in this chamber, in relation to council's budget. It also records variances in the delivery of the 2021 annual plan. In this report, it provides an overview of the commercial operations and financial wellbeing of council's business activities. In terms of council's performance against key financial ratios and targets for the period ended March 2021, all results are within the targets. Not only does this demonstrate effective management of financial risks, it also goes to the heart of this administration's strong commitment to sound financial controls. To echo the words of the Lord Mayor, while we are certainly seeing some broad-based positive economic signs in terms of employment and economic recovery, there continues to be a few lingering impacts from COVID reflected in this report. And I'd have to say, based on councillor Cassidy's comments, that he seems to be living in a parallel universe where COVID didn't exist and all our projects would run smoothly and be delivered on time, when clearly COVID had a major impact on the first half of this financial year and the projects that were commenced during that period. And it's obviously tipped over into this particular part of the financial year. And so we've seen a situation where the first six months of the financial year were quite heavily impacted by COVID, our ability to deliver key projects was impacted. And while to some extent that's obviously been alleviated as we've moved into the first quarter of this calendar year, the recovery has only commenced in recent months. And so we still have a bit of an overlay where projects are catching up, but we would expect them to catch up over coming months. So this report depicts a number of items of note, and particularly an increase in discounts and rebates, mainly due to the special COVID-19 rebate and the Kingsford Smith Drive rebate, which, as the Lord Mayor indicated, went straight back into the pockets of the residents of Brisbane. There was a decrease in developer contributions due to the lower level of developer activities in the current period, an increase in depreciation and amortisation costs, mainly due to higher depreciation for infrastructure assets of $62.5 million as a result of infrastructure asset revaluations undertaken in the prior year. We've also seen an increase in cash and cash equivalents due to net cash generated from operations of $492.5 million, net proceeds from working capital facilities of $189.5 million, receipt of capital contributions, donations, grants, and subsidies to the tune of $89.5 million, and proceeds from disposal of capital assets of $30.8 million. This is partly offset by payments for capital expenditure of $553 million, principal lease payments of $63.1 million, and principal payments of borrowings of $55.9 million. There has been an increase in property, plant, and equipment, mainly due to capital expenditure of $553.2 million, non-developer-donated assets of $63.8 million, developer-contributed assets of $41.9 million, asset upgrades for service concession assets of $11.3 million, and these are partly offset by depreciation of $329.7 million, the transfer of the Sherwood Bus Depot to assets classified as held for sale of $133 million, disposals of $55.6 million, and a revaluation decreement of land of $18.7 million. So key projects attributable to these listed are on page four of the report. Now, moving to Programme Eight in city governance, the quarterly reports show movements in the budget as a result of increased revenues, rephasing deferrals of some projects due to COVID, and also the nature of receipts and expenditures of state and federal stimulus funding. On the whole, we've seen an increase in actual revenues of circa $40 million when compared to the year-to-date actuals of the 2020/21 budget. This is significantly comprised of the early termination of the Sherwood Bus Depot lease and revenues associated with new accounting standards for service concessions to the tune of approximately $28.4 million. Turning to the annual plan implementation variances, you'll note that a small number of items that are impacted by timing of their delivery, and I'll quickly go through a couple of them here. Firstly, our agreement, formerly known as the EBA. This has been delayed due to unresolved claims by two unions. And I would note that the agreement was supported in principle by all unions, and certainly in recent times, it's been supported by nine unions. We did have a in-principle support in October 2020. However, at the 11th hour, the RTBU and Professionals Australia stated they had some differences, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to move forward with the implementation of the EBA, and it will now be settled through normal industrial processes, which will involve the QIRC. We've also had a bit of a delay in getting some of our fleet onshore, and this is basically a function of global supply chain challenges as a result of COVID. We've had a number of other projects that have been impacted by delays associated with COVID and the acquisition of key pieces of equipment. I won't go into the full details of that, but needless to say, it just does reflect a little bit of an overhang of COVID that we're still working through. And as I indicated, hopefully that will be resolved over coming months. Now, moving to item F, the third budget review. Each year, when the annual plan and budget is set down in this chamber, project delivery is phased based on the best possible information available at the time. It is further refined during the budget review process to reflect changes, and that's what we're doing today. As mentioned in my commentary on the quarterly financial and annual progress report, COVID remains as an influencing factor, though obviously that is diminishing, and that's great to see. We certainly are seeing an environment where the economy and employment and a number of other indicators are starting to trend in a very positive fashion. The, in terms of the changes, the key changes that are going to occur as a result of this 3BR, the anticipated accumulated surplus for the 30th of June 2021, as approved by council, was $13.247 billion. As a result of the third budget review, the anticipated accumulated surplus will increase some $234 million to $13.481 billion. This increase is a result of the implementation of the new accounting standards, specifically service concession arrangements grantors. In this budget review, we have demonstrated savings to the tune of $81.6 million. These savings are a combination of approximately $17.6 million in CapEx and $64 million in OpEx. Savings achieved in CapEx include an emerging projects land acquisition saving of $2.3 million and Transport for Brisbane Tools of Trade of $2 million. And there are a range of complementary OpEx savings as well. Once again, I won't go into those, they're all in the report. We have seen some accounting adjustments with respect to transfers of CapEx to OpEx in the vicinity of $32 million, and these have occurred through projects like accessible bus stops, where there was a transfer of $8.4 million, and delivering iconic parks for Brisbane, where there was a transfer of $1.4 million. Equally, there have been changes from OpEx to CapEx of approximately $12.3 million. I will quickly touch upon some of the items in Programme Eight, which have obviously had some impact as well. So notable changes in Programme Eight include a transfer of $247.5 million from the ERT budget to business and local economy support to fund a sponsorship programme for local events. There was a carryover of $200,000 to 2122 for the Asia-Pacific City Summit. We've also had a number of concessions that have resulted in transfers between accounts. We also have a new project of $62,000 loaded against it for employee emergency broadcast solution, and this is a solution that will allow council employees to communicate during emergency events. And look, just quickly, I did want to touch upon the item B, which related to the ICT. Councillor Johnston made a point of indicating the 25% of ward inquiries were through the call centre.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Further speakers, they're being done. We'll now proceed to councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. Just really briefly on the budget review, I just wanted to highlight, and I think others have drawn attention to the loss of revenue from developer infrastructure charges. And I remember distinctly back in 2016, when I first got in into council, I pointed out that we were sort of in a bit of a boom time in terms of new construction and development approval, and that there was a real opportunity here and a window to capture a little bit more of that revenue and by increasing infrastructure charges. And of course, the council administration's kind of had a bob each way, saying, oh, we, that's a state government issue, it's the state government that's placed the cap on infrastructure charges, while simultaneously doing nothing at all to advocate for removing that cap. And in fact, the LNP's position at the state level is to support retaining that cap on infrastructure charges. But as a result, we've had several years of rapid construction and growth, and very little money from the development industry has actually flowed into council, by council revenues. And then now we're at a point where even that's dried up, and we're staring down the barrel of a situation where we don't have as much certainty about income from developers going forward. And it really feels like we've missed a great opportunity over the past few years, where developers have made hundreds of millions of dollars out of developing our city, billions in fact, when you add it all up. And only a very small proportion of that revenue has been captured to go towards public services and public infrastructure facilities. And so, yeah, looking at this budget review, I just do think it's a bit of a shame that the council administration didn't do a better job of capturing some of that revenue when the opportunity was there. And now that that's drying up, I guess there's going to be more pressure on council to either raise rates or cut services. And I just think it's a little bit disappointing that this administration was so resistant to that idea and didn't do anything at all to advocate for a more flexible and, I guess, what you might almost call a means-tested approach to infrastructure charges, where you look at the land values of the developments that are, of the areas where the developments that are occurring and say, 'Well, look, this is an area where land is really expensive, so we're going to charge higher infrastructure charges, and this is an area where land's a bit cheaper, so the infrastructure charges will be a little bit lower.' Instead, we have a one-size-fits-all infrastructure charges system that means no matter how much the land costs or how expensive it actually is to build, wherever you're building in the city, your infrastructure charges are the same. It's actually a very top-down bureaucratic and one-size-fits-all mechanism that I would have thought the libertarians in the LNP would have been opposed to. You'd have thought that they'd prefer a model where the charges that are levied on a developer actually reflects the costs of the services and infrastructure we're supposed to be delivering. But instead, yeah, rich or poor, major project or minor project, all developers are paying those infrastructure charges at the same rate, and as a result, we just don't have enough money coming in. And I think that really is a key factor as to why we're now in this situation where all the development has happened, and we now need to deliver all this infrastructure, but we no longer have any plan to pay for it, because the only plan that the council had made was to cross its fingers and hope that the construction boom would continue indefinitely, even though we know it's a boom-bust cycle, and that sometimes there'll be money coming in from new development projects, and sometimes there won't be. But you can't rely on tomorrow's developments to pay for the infrastructure we need to accommodate yesterday's developments. We should be making yesterday's developments pay for the infrastructure that is needed to support those communities and those new residents. And I think that's just a real shame that we haven't gotten that balance right.
Further speakers, further speakers, there being none, the Lord Mayor. I'll now put items A, B, and F. All those in favour of items A, B, and F, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cumming. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all councillors are present, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favour of items A, B, and F, please say aye and raise your hand. And those against, items A, B, and F, please say no and raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and 6 against.
The ayes have it. On item E, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Can you do the microphone for me?
Division.
Division. Division called by councillor Shree. And councillor Johnston, can you stand up and do it for me, please? Please stand up and call a division.
Division.
A division called by councillor Shree and councillor Johnston. Please ring the bells. All councillors are present, we will proceed to a vote. All those in favour of item E, please say aye and raise your hand. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. And abstentions, please raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 22 in favour and 2 against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, we will now proceed to debate on items C and D. The Lord Mayor, would you please move those items?
Thank you, Mr Chair. So C and D come together as a package and have been obviously taken seriatum for that reason. They are related. Item C is the Long-Term Infrastructure Plan, and item D is the Local Government Infrastructure Plan. Item D, the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, is something that's required of all councils under state legislation that covers a certain timeframe. And item C, the Long-Term Infrastructure Plan, includes infrastructure that we've identified, not within the LGIP or the Local Government Infrastructure Plan timeframe, but in the longer term. And so this is the format that we've had this plan in previously, and so it should be familiar with, familiar to all councillors. First of all, to the LGIP. This LGIP that's coming forward has been reviewed based on the different patterns of growth in the city of Brisbane. Now, an LGIP by its nature, having a five-year projection of infrastructure that's required, is something that does need to be updated from time to time, and is very much driven by patterns of growth in the city. Now, the council officers have to do a projection on what they expect the growth will be, but the growth does not necessarily turn out to be the same as what was anticipated. And so a number of the changes here relate to different patterns of growth across the city. Some areas progressing faster than was anticipated, and some areas not progressing so quickly as was expected in the previous plan. Council introduces an LGIP not only as a state requirement, but also to allow us to continue levying infrastructure charges for approved new developments, as well as continuing, conditioning trunk infrastructure on certain development approvals. Now, as councillors would be aware, people putting in applications to build new developments in Brisbane in Brisbane have some options either to pay infrastructure charges to council, or in fact to build certain trunk infrastructure themselves. So they have the choice on whether they'll do it, or they'll pay council and we'll do that infrastructure. So this plan facilitates both of those outcomes. The amendment that's proposed today brings 115 new projects into the LGIP, totaling an investment of $374 million. There is an increase in our parks, projects, ferry terminal network, pathways, bikeways, and stormwater network, as well as more land required for community facilities. Signature projects also being brought into the LGIP include the Victoria Park project, Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek green bridges, and the Howards Smith Wars ferry terminal. In addition to these projects of citywide benefit, there's also $25 million worth of transport infrastructure in the suburb of Rochdale, which is growing rapidly, and $20 million worth of stormwater in Polara, which is being brought forward. There are also four brand-new parks being brought forward, and $46 million in upgrades and embellishments to existing parks in this plan. Now, this plan that we're voting on today is not the final product, it is a plan that will go out to public consultation, which will begin on the 31st of May and last for 20 business days. Related to the infrastructure plan is the long-term plan that I mentioned before. The long-term infrastructure plan will see 52 projects being transferred from the LGIP, which are making their way into the LTIP, so they're being transferred from the LGIP into the LTIP. This has been done for a whole range of reasons, including a change in delivery timeframes or the expected development in an area not coming to fruition in the way that was anticipated. After five years of monitoring growth in Brisbane, it's the right time to review the projects that were included all those years ago in the original LGIP. Should be made clear that moving projects to the LTIP does not mean that they won't happen, it simply changes the delivery timeframe based on the expected development of the city and the suburbs. It also determines when projects are required in terms of the growth of the community, and one of the key outcomes of having an LTIP is that when a development approval is granted in and around that project site, we can condition the land to be preserved for our long-term interests. So the LGIP relates specifically to the collection of infrastructure charges, or the building of infrastructure, trunk infrastructure by people carrying out developments. The LTIP allows us to condition the preservation of land. LTIP does not allow us to collect charges, that only happens as part of the LGIP. So basically, in the short term, in the five-year period, we see collection of infrastructure charges for those projects. In the longer term, so plus five years, it's about the preservation of land that will be required for infrastructure down the track. So that's some of the critical differences here between these two plans. Fifty-two projects are being moved into the LTIP. There are 115 projects that are coming to be brought forward from the LTIP into the LGIP. So there's an overall increase in projects in the short term, and by making these changes, we're ensuring that our delivery programme is targeted and makes the most impact to meet the needs of our growing city.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd like to speak on both of these items together, clause C and D. They both deal with the planning, the future infrastructure needs of Brisbane arising from future development. Many of the changes in these items propose moving some matters, we've heard about those 'some matters', from the long-term infrastructure plan to the local government infrastructure plan and vice versa. These forward infrastructure plans should be considering the future needs as Brisbane grows. They include community facilities, transport and roads, water and sewage infrastructure requirements, and develop a schedule of works and costings to reflect that. Now, while some of these works have been brought forward, as we heard a couple of examples there, the vast majority are being pushed out into the distant future, Chair. Promised parks and community facilities in Mitchelton, Rochdale, Windsor, Wilston, Belimba, South Brisbane, West End haven't been delivered. Sports and recreation precincts in Fitzgibbon, Callumvale, Alchester, Bridgeman Downs, Upper Kedron, Rochdale, West End, and Wakely haven't been delivered. We see $11 million projected for the upgrade of the Norman Park Ferry Terminal, the same one that the LMP shut down and is now refusing to upgrade, blaming residents for it being discontinued. So we wonder what is going on there, Chair? Is it part of this LMP administration's secret plans to privatise river-based public transport, perhaps upgrading it for water taxis only, Chair, or maybe just never at all? Open-level crossing works at Cooperu and Coopers Plains have been pushed back, nudgy road intersections have been delayed, and it's concerning that stormwater improvement works in suburbs like Albion, Polara, and Yorongah have also been postponed again. Excuse me. The list of cancelled and delayed suburban works runs very long under this LMP administration, Chair. The entire budget is being chewed up by the Lord Mayor's vanity projects and basic community upgrades are losing out. The LMP's priorities are themselves, Chair, and not Brisbane residents. They, quite simply, looking at these changes to the LGIP, don't care about the suburbs. Now, clause D is probably the most concerning, and includes the most concerning figure of all, that $2.1 billion infrastructure deficit projected for the Brisbane City Council by 2026. That is a $2.1 billion infrastructure deficit projected for this council by 2026. In the cash flow modelling for these infrastructure plans, it shows that council's deficit blows out from around $250 million to $2.1 billion in just five years. A $2.1 billion black hole in funding for critical infrastructure for a growing city, that's a fairly dire projection, Chair. It's eye-watering but makes sense in a way, considering the sheer amount of rates that this Lord Mayor throws away in cost blowouts and discounts given to developers. And perhaps if the LMP planned projects are a bit better, this projected deficit wouldn't be so horrific. Every time this LMP Lord Mayor announces a project, Chair residents are starting to cringe. They know it means either a deal with developers or massive cost blowouts. And proof of that is on that final page of the cost model, that $2.1 billion shortfall. The bigger the deficit, Chair, the higher the LMP will have to hike Brisbane rates, and the more they will cut community services. Now, people are happy to pay their rates when they know that that is going to providing their communities and their suburbs with the services and infrastructure that they need and they deserve, but we're seeing less and less of that return for rates paid in our suburbs. The Lord Mayor clearly just has one plan, Chair, he's in it for himself and not the people of Brisbane. If only we had a Lord Mayor that did their homework before announcing a project, or shared the priorities of residents, not developers, then we would have a clear plan for infrastructure in Brisbane with less cost blowouts, a more livable city, better cash flow projections, lower rates, and more services for our suburbs. But unfortunately, that hypothetical situation will stay hypothetical as long as this Lord Mayor and LMP administration are in charge. They continue to choose the shortest possible period for planning the future infrastructure needs of our city. When this initially came to council, and the requirements for the LGIP were brought in, councils were given an option to develop plans for up to 15 years ahead. A 15-year plan would have given this city a very clear plan to address the needs of a growing Brisbane well into the future, but we know that this Lord Mayor and LMP administration opted for the shortest possible timeframe for an infrastructure plan, which was 10 years. The plan runs from 2016 to 2026, but of course didn't come into effect until 2018, making this just an eight-year plan. So, you know, this administration took two years to get the plan drawn up, and has now to date pushed out an enormous amount of projects into potential future plans, or potentially never delivered at all. That's extremely disappointing for the residents and ratepayers of Brisbane, but it's not entirely surprising when you look at the track record of this LMP administration. It is more proof that the LMP don't have a plan for Brisbane, and can't get out of their own way to make one for Brisbane, Chair. They don't care about our city or its people, the only thing they care about is their political careers, and that's writ large here tonight.
Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Ross, to speak on the two items on the agenda before us today. And firstly, I just want to start by saying, there is a long history to this administration failing to deliver on the infrastructure needs for our city. It dates back to the LGIP, when it was created and the PIP was killed off. The PIP was a reasonably useful document, in that it had a lot of stuff in it, but it gave people a really good idea about what would be delivered over a long period of time. Now, when the LGIP was introduced, back when our city plan was developed, the Lord Mayor doted Tennyson Ward at that stage, and I'm reading from the LGIP. There were over 1,000 projects valued at approximately $2 billion across the city. The Lord Mayor at that point had allocated $8 million in Tennyson Ward. There were 22 drainage projects for Yorongah, and that was pretty much about it, there really wasn't a lot going in. The stormwater projects, Ipswich Road, Cracknell Road, Villa Street Road project, which has been cancelled by this administration, Coonan Street, Wall Street intersection upgrade, that's still on the list, Long Street, East at Graceville, that is still on the list, and I don't think the Oxley Creek Common at Rockleigh is even making the list anymore. So now we move to the current documents before us today, the LGIP. There are approximately just over 1,000 projects that I can see on the LGIP at about $2.4 billion. Within Tennyson Ward, there are just 13 projects, and that includes individual pipes. So what is really one project might actually be four, because it's pipes across a certain area. The total cost of these projects for Tennyson Ward is $12 million. That's out of a budget of $2.4 billion for the city. It works out, I think, approximately, if it was done fairly, $90 million per ward, and about 40-plus projects per ward. So whichever way you look at it, Tennyson Ward is being doted, and if you believe the Deputy Mayor or the Lord Mayor, it's because there's no development happening in Tennyson Ward. Well, I don't think they exist on planet Earth with us. We've had massive upgrades to Sherwood and Corinda with five- and six-story buildings. We've had massive upgrades through Yorongah, with industrial land converted to major units, including multiple six-story buildings in Cairnsdale Street, multiple five-story buildings on Venna Road. We've seen, just last week, this administration allow a commercial childcare development on a heritage-listed sport and recreation site. We've had massive new suburb built in Yorongpili. We've seen four-story buildings built along Fairfield Road in Yorongah. We've seen hundreds of townhouses where there were houses through Yorongah, and we've seen major public housing developments. Yorongah has experienced some of the strongest growth in the city, and not a cent, not a cent, has been invested. It's worse than that. So, back in 2000 in Yorongah, council did a stormwater drainage project, and at that time found that the stormwater drainage in Yorongah West was inadequate. The report states that there should be no further infill development in Yorongah West until stormwater is upgraded. Fair enough, 2000, that's that. Then council put it on the PIP, great. They put it on the LGIP, but even then, they cut some of the Yorongah projects from the PIP to the LGIP, but they listed it, and it was supposed to be done between 2016 and 2021. It's today, March 2021. Now, as most people in this chamber know, every year I stand up and I advocate in the budget for the stormwater projects in Yorongah to be delivered. They've been listed on the LGIP and the PIP for the best part of two decades. And today, councillor Krista Adams, the Lord Mayor, and the Liberal National Party are cancelling those projects. They are cancelled. There are 22 individual pipe projects in the stormwater drainage projects that are being cut at about $4 million. Now, this is critical infrastructure for Yorongah residents. Yorongah is a suburb that experiences flooding now, localized flooding, flooding in homes, flooding in streets, flooding in parks. It happens in heavy rain, it happens when the river floods. And the fact that councillor Adams is publicly stating there is not enough development happening in Yorongah will be a slap in the face to these residents who know the giant six-story buildings being built in the suburbs. The actions of the LMP here today are appalling. Councillor Adams proudly boasts that she's putting it on to the LTIP. Well, guess what? There's no funding allocated to it, there's no timeframe allocated to it, it's a never-never list. And has she answered any of the questions that I've put forward today about what these projects are, when they'll be funded, what their scope is? She's done none of those things, nor has the Lord Mayor. So let me be clear, this administration is robbing Yorongah residents, who have advocated strongly for improved stormwater drainage projects, that they have fought for years to have these stormwater upgraded throughout Yorongah, and the failure of this administration to deliver these projects over the last five years, they're not even rolling them over to the next five years, they're actually cancelling them, cancelling them out of the LGIP, putting them on the never-never list with no funding attached to them and no timeframe commitment to do it. Now, I want to make a few other very brief remarks. I'm looking at the stormwater project, there's a couple of other small pipe projects going on there in Oxley, which are about $1.5 million, that's it. Now, I live in a southside ward that floods badly, and that's the only stormwater project going. For the pathways project, there's one bikeway project in Oxley, that's lovely. There are 90 projects and $300 million allocated to bikeways. There are three projects in Oxley totaling $3 million. It's statistical anomaly, it's 0.00001% of the budget. The stormwater projects, there are 400 stormwater projects on the list, there are five in Tennyson Ward totaling $1.5 million, out of a budget of $141 million. When it comes to parks and community facilities, there's nothing, there's nothing. $40 million allocated citywide and not a sausage for Tennyson Ward. When it comes to public parks and community facilities, there are 170 projects valued at $576 million. There is one in Tennyson Ward, 170 projects citywide, there is one listed in Tennyson Ward, just the one. And that's a project that council's already doing, that has popped on the list, so there's probably one park project there in the Sherwood Arboretum. Here we are with the road network schedule. There are four projects out of 360 citywide, 360 citywide, and there are four in Tennyson Ward. They're valued totally at $1 billion across the city, $5.8 million in Tennyson Ward. And for anybody listening at home, there's only 26 wards, and I'm sure you can do the math on that. It's statistically an anomaly to see how much funding Tennyson Ward is getting. And here we are with, this is land, no, this is ferry terminal upgrades, zero for Tennyson Ward, $126 million, 10 projects. Then when you look at the LTIP, so that's appalling, in my view, as I said, there are over 1,000 projects and $2.4 billion citywide, just 13 projects are in Tennyson Ward, valued at around $12 million. That is an outrage. Residents in Tennyson Ward suburbs, Chelma, Graceville, Sherwood, Corinda, Oxley, Tennyson, Yorongpili, Yorongah, Fairfield, and Annelie pay huge volumes of rates, they pay huge money into this city, and to watch the LMP administration not only take away projects that have been promised for many, many years, and that are desperately needed, but to fail to allocate to these suburbs that are experiencing high levels of growth any kind of new projects is shameful. Do you know who is getting it? The Gap Ward. I had a good read of what's going on with the stormwater, and whilst they're taking projects off Yorongah because there's not enough growth, apparently that great bastion of high-rise growth and development, the Gap, is getting stormwater projects. of higher-rise growth and development, the Gap, is getting stormwater projects.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise to speak in support of the L-Gip amendments as they are before us in this chamber today. What is very important is that we do go back to what the L-Gip is all about. It is for acknowledging those areas of the city that are experiencing rapid growth and addressing projects to support that growth so that the infrastructure is in place to match the population growth. So I would like to speak tonight about some of the projects that are coming through the L-Gip to support the rapid growth that we have had in the suburb of Polara. So for those people who are not aware of the volume of growth, there has been nearly 4,000 individual housing lots that have come online in the past couple of years. Now, unfortunately, the Electoral Commission of Queensland took Polara out of my ward between 2016 and 2020, and that caused a little bit of a disruption in my advocacy for this suburb. But certainly since it has come back into my ward in April 2020, we have seen some improvements that have already come through. In fact, the Polara State School has bus services that goes into the main suburb of Polara. It will be getting an extension of the 803 bus service into Heathwood Avenues, Heathwood Rise, Chain of Ponds, and Sanctuary Pocket Estates from the 12th of July. But most importantly, through this L-Gip programme, I want to say to all of the parents with children at Polara State School, there is $3,997,760 that is there to address the intersection of Wadeville Street and Ritchie Road, and then following on down to 139 Ritchie Road, to enhance the safety and the road infrastructure immediately outside Polara State School. There is $931,116 to go into bikeways that lead from Veed Road through to Sweets Road, and then from Sweets Road through to Craft Road. There is $4,110,847 for local access and recreational corridor parks. This is needed because these new residents that are coming into this area need to have areas for their children to play, for them to access the school safely, and also to ensure that that school precinct is catered for as far as major road infrastructure improvements. Now, as the Lord Mayor mentioned, there is approximately $20 million that is going towards natural channels, culverts and pipes, and wetlands for stormwater management throughout that precinct. There are a lot of young families moving into the suburb of Polara. This is an important area, and being formerly a rural area, that was decided upon to become part of the growth of the Oxley Wedge by a former Labor Premier, it is important that we, as the Shrinna Council Administration, deal with this growth that is happening now and that has come to the forefront over the past couple of years. We are dealing with it, we recognise the population growth, the council officers are working with us to ensure that the infrastructure that is needed is going to be there to support the young families that are choosing to make Polara their home. So I say to all of the officers who have been working behind the scenes since I've gone back to advocate for this suburb since April 2020, thank you for your support of these young families, because this infrastructure is going to help this suburb to grow as the population increases over times to come. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, thank you Chair. And I'm just rise to speak on clause D and attachment C. And I just want to start off my comments to say, I totally agree with councillor Johnson in regards to that briefing, that would have been very helpful to answer a lot of the questions that we're dealing with right now, I suppose, and will we get any answers? I doubt it, because there probably won't be enough time, and, well, but anyways, so my team and myself, we sat down and had a look extensively through clause D, because it's probably in the ENC report today, and we came out, we spent quite a number of hours actually doing this as well, and it was very informing. And first, let me just highlight one issue which I just thought was really, really curious and strange, and that was that, you know, from page 25 through to 40, there were a number of projects, mostly road projects actually, and also quite substantial amounts of money, many, many millions of dollars in these projects. And what we found actually, when we compared the previous L-Gip to the current one, or the proposed one here, and that is that they, each one of, there was actually six projects here I've got on the list, that were actually reduced in value, or in dollar terms, by exactly $1,000. Now, isn't that interesting? When you can have one project that's worth, say, $3.2 million, another one $1.6 million, but interestingly enough, all the ones that were reduced in my ward were reduced by an exact amount of money of $1,000, with the exception of one that was $2,000. And you wonder if there's like a harvesting algorithm that was set loose with all these projects right across Brisbane, not necessarily in my ward, I would hope, and to try to reduce the amount of money that was going to be needed for these projects in the future. I don't know if that had any implication on that $2.1 billion that the leader of the opposition was talking about, but possibly. So now, let's move on, and another interesting item out of the L-Gip for this particular clause was some projects that were actually removed from the L-Gip. Now, there are two large ones here that I thought were significant enough to raise here tonight, and the first one was the Johnson Road, just from Woolgaroo Street down to Stradbroke Street, down Johnson Road. Now, I know the councillor Owen knows this road quite well, as anyone who lives in and around the area that we live, and there was supposed to be an upgrade to this corridor of $16.733 million, and now that has been dropped. Now, this road is a connector road right through to Browns Plains for many of my residents in the Forest Lake area, and of course in Ellen Grove as well. These people rely upon that road, and it's quite, it has been deteriorating over a number of years since I've lived and worked in the area. But to see that just be, just knocked out, $16.73 million, that's one that I would have loved to ask at a briefing, to see why has that happened? Don't we need it anymore? I don't think so. And of course, Woolgaroo and Johnson Road, that intersection as well, is designated to be upgraded into a regulated intersection at some stage in the future. So I don't know why the upgrade of the road itself was gotten rid of. Now, we had a briefing at the, in the infrastructure last week in regards to the Ipswich Mudway Project and the completion of that from Dara to, sorry, from Rockleigh to Oxley, and part of that, part of that upgrade was an exit that came around behind Harvey Norman's and through an industrial area down onto Boundary Road, which didn't exist before that was built, and it was very much needed. And it's a beautiful road now, by the way, but it feeds out onto Boundary Road then, which goes through to the industrial estate in Richlands. So you can imagine, you know, there's going to be a lot of happy drivers, a lot of happy, suppose, you know, truck drivers that are going to use that road, because it's a beautiful road now, and it takes you straight into the industrial estate. And I said to the person that was presenting on the day, I said, "What about the golf club? What's happened with the golfers that are in Boundary Road?" The clubhouse is on one side of Boundary Road, and the majority of the golf course is on the other side, and there's a lot of golfers, and they have a membership there of many, many hundreds of golfers, and I said, "What's happening with the safety of golfers?", because I do remember that there was, in the original design of what was actually delivered, there was supposed to be some consideration given to the golf club as to how the golfers get across the road when it becomes much, much busier. And I was told, everyone sort of looked at me blank, and said, "We don't know about that." I said, "Well, I've worked in the state office, I actually saw it, I saw it on the plans", and all of a sudden, it's not happening, and I thought, "Oh, okay, I'll accept what they say", until I looked here, and there it was, $9.9 million for that corridor project upgrade from where they left off to, down to Kimberley Street. And that was supposed to be spent on looking after the safety of some of those golfers, and also to improve the road itself, because there is, it was really almost an old rural road, still is pretty much all the way through to Archfield Road, it's still a pretty rural road, the shoulders are shocking. And one of the developers actually, that just built a facility just before Kimberley Street, had to modify their design for their project, because to make, to make this, they had to actually design their project to fit in with the upgrade that isn't going to happen. So they've wasted all that money for no good, because it's not going to happen anymore. Projects added to the L-Gip, well, there's an interesting one here as well, at Ellen Grove. There's four properties, partial parts of the properties, I should say, that has had some development happening, and they were set aside for some recreational infrastructure, parks and recreational, I suppose you'd call, and it was in the original PIP, by the way, some, you know, years before I was councillor, and then it was set aside, and then when the L-Gip took over in, what, about 2018, it disappeared. We weren't going to need park space or park and recreational space in that area anymore. This is an acreage area that's actually had a lot of development happening, so we really do need a lot of parkland to support those new builds that are actually happening. And what's happened? It's back in again. So I'm calling it the Yo-Yo Project, because, you know, it's in, it's out, it's in, I just can't, I can't track that one. One of the good news that we got about 18 months ago was the upgrade of the Thrust Streets, Thrust Street Park at Anala for about a million, but, well, it was about $1.1 million, but now it says it's $1.5. They actually haven't started the project, but I believe they will be starting it before the end of this calendar year, and it's very, going to be very appreciated for those people that live in and around the area. It's a lovely park, it deserves an upgrade, embellishment, and the PCYC is right next door, and they're really looking forward to that as well. So, and projects that were not delivered between those years of 2012 and 2022, or 2021, I should say, there was a couple of those as well, and one was a, Richlands, it was a bikeway from Madely Street to Eugenia Street, which is going through, which actually skirts through an area that's under development as well. Why we're not going to, why we haven't actually delivered that, it was only $687,000. It should have, should have happened along with the development, but it did not. And also, the final one here at Ellen Grove, Waterford Road, was, we can't work this one out actually what it is, because there's a, there's a particular piece of land which is on the corner of Waterford Road and Woolgaroo Street.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired.
Thank you Chair.
Further speakers? Any further speakers still? Councillor Shree? Councillor Shree?
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on the L-Gip and the LTIP, and I'm tempted to go on a long list of what I think should and shouldn't have been included in the documents. I might try and keep that to a shorter list, but the first, I guess, most important point I wanted to make is really a point that's not addressed to the councillors in this chamber, but that's addressed to the public servants and to the residents of this city. And that point is quite simply that these documents that we're voting on here today are political documents. They are political documents in the sense that they are not necessarily informed by best practice, evidence-based planning principles or sustainable planning principles. The decisions about what projects and items have been included or excluded are not based on the highest and most important needs for our city, or the highest priorities for our city. They are based on political calculations about what might win votes, or what might deliver on certain LMP election promises. And I think it's important to just state that clearly for the record, because I worry that a year or two from now, I'll be in a conversation with some council officer, and I'll be saying, "Look, we really need this project, it's a really high priority for the city." And now I'll say, "Oh, but it's not in the, it's not in the L-Gip, and it's not in the long-term infrastructure plan." I guess, I guess if it's not in those plans, it mustn't be very important. But the point is that these plans do not actually show and articulate what are the most important projects for our city, or what are the projects that we most urgently need to cater for growth and new development. In some cases, that's what they do, but many of the projects in there are projects that are not necessarily the highest priority, but have been included simply because it was politically valuable for the LMP to do so, or because they had some agreement with a particular developer or stakeholder. And I think as one really obvious example for me, that the Howard Smith Wharves Ferry Terminal stands out. Now, I'm not opposed to a terminal being constructed there, and I think there are a lot of residents who see the value of a terminal, ferry terminal being constructed there, but I strongly reject the suggestion that that is the highest priority use in terms of funding for new ferry infrastructure for our city. There's no general river transport plan or strategy that says, "We really need a new terminal at Howard Smith Wharves." There's no long-term transport strategy that identified that as important, or that says, "Oh, this is a gap in our transport network, or this is a place where we really need to provide more access to river-based transport." And in fact, it's literally only a few hundred metres walk along the river to the Eagle Street existing terminals. So the reason that Howard Smith Wharves Ferry Terminal is being built is essentially because council did a deal with that particular developer, and it's...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you.
I've been listening now for two minutes, and the imputing motive is outstanding, and I ask him to withdraw that comment.
Councillor Shree, will you withdraw that comment?
No, I don't understand what I'm said, it's a matter of public record that council made a deal with the developer.
Right, thank you, Councillor Shree. Look, can I just ask you, it's a direction that reflects on all councils, please don't impugn motive, Councillor Shree.
Can you please define what impute motive means, Chair?
Yes, but it will take up your time.
Okay, sure.
So why don't you just use your time for you.
No, that's fine. Look, I stand by my comments, I think council did a, council did a deal with the developer, and that deal led to that terminal being prioritised ahead of other higher priority infrastructure for our city. And like, let's not beat around the bush about this, that's what happened. Council looked at how it could spend money and what its priorities were, and said, "Look, that's where we're going to prioritise funding, is for construction of a new terminal at Howard Smith Wharves." Even though I haven't heard a single transport planner in council, or the state government, or any independent experts say, "We really need a terminal there at Howard Smith Wharves as a high priority." The only people I saw arguing for that as a high priority, really, were the developers and other stakeholders attached to the developers. And I think that's just one small example of, but there are many projects in the L-Gip and the LTIP that have been included, not because they are the highest priorities for our city, but because it suited a particular stakeholder, or it was politically valuable for a certain councillor as part of an election campaign. And I don't think that's a controversial or inaccurate, like, I see a few councillors rolling their eyes as, "Oh, I've said something shocking." That's pretty clear, and it's equally clear when you look at what's not been included in these documents. I'm going to just read a short excerpt from the South Brisbane Riverside Neighbourhood Plan, which is a document that was introduced around a decade ago now, and led to the upzoning of large chunks of West End. This is 3.7 Riverside South Precinct, it's not too long a section, but it says, "This precinct will provide transition between..." It's not too long a section, but it says, this precinct will provide transition between the tin and timber housing of Greater West End and Highgate Hill and new development in the South Brisbane Riverside area. Precinct will accommodate predominantly medium to high-density residential development, replacing obsolete industrial and warehouse uses. Small-scale retail and commercial uses integrated within new residential developments. Service in the local community are permitted. One new supermarket with a gross floor area of up to 1,500 square metres is supported. A new ferry terminal will be located at Victoria Street. Associated land uses will be supported to activate the terminal. Now, that's in there, in council's own neighbourhood plan. That's not some vague strategic extrinsic material. That's in the statutory document, that's in the neighbourhood plan and the city plan from a decade ago saying, we're going to deliver a new city cat terminal here at West End. It's there in, in black and white, or actually, I think the font is a sort of purple when I look at it in the original document. It's very clear that council has said in its neighbourhood plan, we're going to deliver a ferry terminal. And yet now, a decade later, that new ferry terminal for the western side of West End still isn't in the L GIP or the L TIP. And, and all, the only responses I've heard from council are, oh, we're still conducting, we're undertaking a further rivers, river transport study to decide what we need. And don't worry, we gave you a bus along Montague Road. That's, that's apparently the satisfactory substitute, even though we've had higher density development and a greater scale of development than that neighbourhood plan contemplated. We've had even more density development than that neighbourhood plan anticipated. And yet the council hasn't delivered the ferry terminal infrastructure that it said it would. And, and I think that is yet another example of the fact that even though we've got our own council planners, our own transport planners have said, look, we're going to need a ferry terminal down there on the western side of West End because we're cramming another 10,000 people into the west of Montague Road, literally 10,000 people within that one small area. And our council planners have said, yeah, we're going to need a city cat terminal to carry those people in and out of that neighbourhood. They've, they've identified that, it's been there in their own strategy, and yet it hasn't made it into the L GIP or the L TIP. I could go on with more examples, the Kangaroo Point River, River Walk, the western side, the eastern side of the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. There's been a clear articulation of the need to complete that River Walk, it's there in the cycling overlay, it's there in the transport strategy and corridor studies. There's a clearly identified need and a recognition that that project is a priority. It's even in the Kangaroo Point Urban Renewal Strategy from 2018 that was the precursor to the neighbourhood plan, where in that strategy, council said it would deliver that completed section of River Walk in a five to 10-year timeframe. It's there in council's own planning documents, yet the completion of that Kangaroo Point River Walk hasn't made it into the local government infrastructure plan or even the long-term infrastructure plan. So I want to be very clear to the people of Brisbane and to particularly the public servants who will end up looking back at these documents over time, that the decision to include or exclude certain projects from the local government infrastructure plan was a political decision. It was not based on best practice, sustainable transport or sustainable urban planning principles. It was not based on a rigorous assessment of what the most important needs for our community were. It was simply based on what the L N P thought was most politically viable to include and exclude at the time. And I, I can even look at some of the projects there for West End, I'm, I'm genuinely surprised to see, see the costings there. There's identification of the need to buy a couple of hectares of parkland in, in West End and South Brisbane. But the money allocated there is, is far less than the actual cost of buying that land will be. We're talking about, like, the, the land areas and the sites identified are probably worth tens of millions of dollars, perhaps even close to $100 million. And the council's allocated around $10 million to buy it all back. So where's the other $90 million going to come from? The other councillors have identified that there's already a shortfall in terms of the money available, money that's proposed to be spent under this L GIP. But even, even the money that's proposed to be spent doesn't cover the true cost of delivering this infrastructure. So I'm very disappointed at the poor planning that's informed this process. I don't think it is genuine planning, I think it's a political exercise. I'm very disappointed to see that there's no new intersections and, and safety upgrades along Montague Road, which is a serious, serious issue.
Councillor Shree, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I stand to speak on items C and D before us today. First of all, before I go into the items, I just would like to make apologies to the council officers who have spent months working on this L GIP and this L TIP through the methodology that is clearly outlined to us by the state government that we must, under legislation, follow. What we just heard there from Councillor Shree today was the height of hypocrisy considering we heard earlier today about his concepts of consultation when it comes to projects in his ward. The council officers follow the methodology and work hard on this and to say otherwise is insulting. So I apologize to you on behalf of the chamber. With regards to item D and item C, as it relates, first of all, to the L, the L TIP, as the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, we've been working away on these amendments and as I just said, the council officers have, for quite a few months. Both of these documents need to be looked at together and revised as the direction of Brisbane constantly changes. So we get questions from those on the other side saying, tell us what changes and show us how it's different and how much has moved. All you need to do is pick up the L TIP from the last time and put it beside the L TIP of this time and you can see those changes. But let me make it clear, let me make it very clear, Mr. Chair, which is where we hear sometimes from the other side, the Lord Mayor did answer the questions that came on notice around the general changes within the L TIP. There are no, projects in L TIP are scheduled for delivery from the year 2026, from the year 2026. There is no indicative budget assigned for their delivery because of course by 2026, budget and cost will change. Seventeen road projects moving into the L TIP, two park projects, 32 stormwater projects and one bikeway project. And in the case of the stormwater network, there is a case of specific areas in Brisbane not reaching the density targets or expected. As I said, there is a very clear growth model that is used by the officers when they prepare an L GIP and then what goes into the long-term infrastructure plan. And that growth modeling is all based around expectations of what we've seen in the last few years and what we are expecting to come. But guess what? Things happen, things like floods in 2011 or COVID pandemics in 2020, and these growth modelings change. So you would think that the councillor for Tennyson Ward had seen metropolitan New York develop in Yorongah over the last three years from what we heard here this afternoon, which is utterly ridiculous, utterly ridiculous. I'm sure there has been growth in Yorongah, I'm sure there has been change in Yorongah, but on comparison across the city, not like some other suburbs. And when it comes to the growth modeling, let's make it clear, Mr. Chair, 72 is the rec, is the number where Yorongah comes in, in the 190 suburbs in this city. Seventy-second place for development. So to say that we should prioritize Yorongah for stormwater drainage over 71 other suburbs that have grown more than Yorongah is outrageous. But what we usually hear, Cooperoo 522 DAs, Camp Hill 483, even at fifth, West End only had, only, but it still had 374, Councillor Shree, yes, there's definitely growth in that area. And guess what? 10 years ago, and in Yorongah, 127. Because the complaints I heard were about Yorongah. And Yorongah was 127, one-third of those that saw the highest growth. And when it comes to not delivering a ferry terminal that was put in the neighbourhood plan 10 years ago, well, 10 years ago, that neighbourhood plan, we then had a flood. We had a massive flood. And that massive flood changed a lot of the hydrology works that we know now in Brisbane and a lot more work needed to be done on that ferry terminal and it's still being done. But guess what? Instead of the ferry terminal at this point in time, he's getting two green bridges. Hands up if you're on the river and would like two green bridges. But some people aren't never happy. As it relates to road projects, the majority are moving into L TIP due to the delivery not being scheduled between 2020, before 2026. And most of these 52 projects that are being moved into L TIP, 115 are being brought forward into the L GIP. So some of them that were on the long-term infrastructure plan are coming back into the local government infrastructure plan. And this will all be, the L TIP will be out to consultation from the 31st of May to the 27th of June. So let's talk about the L GIP and the big mean shriner council that stopped the PIP. Let's get it clear again. It is state legislation. We have to do an L GIP, we are no longer allowed to do a PIP, a Priority Infrastructure Plan, for those who haven't been in council for quite as long a time. And it came in, in 2018, not 2014. So again, the councillor for Tennyson is definitely not on the same planet as us, but we're on Earth and that explains it. These changes are making it clear and transparent to the community about what we prioritizing in the delivery of our important trunk infrastructure to support existing and future residents of Brisbane. It is a requirement, as I said, under state government legislation, as is the methodology set by state government legislation, that our council officers follow to a T. We receive infrastructure charges for these new, from new developments and the L GIP allows us to use the infrastructure charges on the things that are in the L GIP. Otherwise, we couldn't build them with infrastructure charges. And the definition of trunk infrastructure, again, is set out by the Queensland Government and we've incorporated these obviously into our planning policy as well. There is one particular item I do want to address proactively and that is that there's been a lot of projects that have had their value, value increased by $1. And Councillor Strunk said he sat down carefully and went through this line by line, but obviously not with the leader of the opposition to go by his speech. And if you had a look at it, there would have been a lot of them that had changed by a very small percentage in dollars, but this was around calculations to zero decimal places. So there's a significant number of the changes we see in the L GIP that are purely due to rounding changes. Again, as I said, state methodology that requires us to update it that way as well. I think what everybody needs to understand, whether they feel their area is growing fast or growing slow, this is a whole of Brisbane infrastructure plan. A whole of infrastructure plan for Brisbane to reflect the changing nature of our city.
Point of order, Chair.
Where there are high-growth suburbs-
Point of order to you, Councillor Shree.
Will the Deputy Mayor take a question?
Deputy Mayor, will you take a question?
Where there are high-growth suburbs and major infrastructure projects designed to keep our city moving. If they're not in the L GIP, we can't use infrastructure charges to build them. So there is definitely the vision for the city here from the Shriner Council, but the work by the council officers to make sure that those priorities are, make sure that they're in there so that they can be delivered for the future. This document is like everything that we do in the Shriner Council. It's about making the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further speakers? Further speakers? They're being done the Lord Mayor. I will now, I will now put-
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I asked a whole range of questions about projects in the L TIP, including a lot of road projects, asking what the scope of those projects were, and that's not been addressed in, by either the Lord Mayor or the Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, I did forget to mention that in my speech, if you allow. No.
The, the, your, your speech has concluded. Councillor Johnston, the rules allow for questions to be asked and for answers to be provided, however, it doesn't, the, that the answers be provided is not compulsory within the rules. I will now proceed to items C and D. All those in, all those in favour of items C and D, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by Councillor Strunk and Councillor Johnston, please ring the bells. All councillors of present will proceed to a vote. All those in favour of items C and D, please say aye and raise your hand. And those against, please say no and raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and six against.
The ayes have it and that concludes the Establishment and Coordination Committee report. Councillors, we'll proceed to the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 18th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Second that.
It's been moved by Councillor Adams, seconded by Councillor Hammond, the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 18th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? The Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to the comments around the questions, I'm sorry, I was remiss in not mentioning that in my speech, that the, there was a many, many, many questions that came from Councillor Johnston about her local area. We answered all the questions around the general questions of the difference between the L GIP and the L TIP and what had moved. But as I said very clearly in my correspondence before closures of business yesterday to Councillor Johnston, if she emails the city planning team, they are more than happy and we're waiting this morning to give her her briefing on how it affects the Tennyson Ward. And all of those questions will be answered if she would like to take up the opportunity as any other councillor in this place can be briefed on the L GIP and the L TIP within their local area.
No, 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 no dejections, please. The Deputy Mayor, please proceed. No, no, no dejections.
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Shree.
Would Councillor Adams just take a quick question?
I'll give him the email, it's fine, Councillor.
Sorry, so, did you want to take a question? Councillor Johnston, please stop talking. Councillor Adams, did you want to answer the question that Councillor Shree was asking? Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Which goes through the chief planner's email. The, what's happening this week in the Brisbane hub? It is an absolute record-breaking week in terms of registrations for our workshops that are coming up. Boost Your Business with Social Media Marketing, CCIQ, is on Thursday from 9 till 11. We've got 169 registered. Glenn Richards, the founder of Green Cross and Shark Tank Investor is on the couch this week. That's at 5 o'clock on Thursday afternoon, currently 200 are registered and there is a waitlist. So you might have to get on the waitlist if you're interested for that one. And Build Your Brand with a Video Masterclass from CCIQ on next Tuesday from 3 to 5. We've already got 112 registered. So hopefully people are listening to me and sharing that information with their local residents and they're coming in and getting involved in the workshops. We've also got some fantastic on-the-couches coming up with, with very inspiring speakers that you may want to get into early to advertise to your residents. On the 30th of June, Cathy Reed, the co-founder of Epic Group, was listed in one of the top 100 Women of Influence by Australia Financial Review. And I do know she has been training as booked onto the first flight of the shuttle with Virgin when it goes. We've got 29th of July with Alice Barberry, the CEO of Universal Store. And the 26th of August has got Tracy Mather's from Mather Shoes. So a bit of a shoe thing there, Councillor Marks, if you're interested in both of those. By the end of this week, the hub will have delivered 81 events, over 2,000 event attendees. And the drop-ins over that time, 1,200 people have just dropped in to say hello and see how we can help them. So well done to the team over in the Brisbane hub, they're going from strength to strength. And again, I ask all in the chamber to make sure that their residents know about it, but don't forget if you're on the north side of Brisbane, you've now also got the suburban business networking hub in Nunda Village as well. Last week's presentation was presented by the team at the Brisbane hub, in particular Isaac, a senior industry manager in technology, provided an update on the PropTech initiative. So this was introduced this year as a part of our intensive industry program. And if you're not familiar with what PropTech is, it's emerging technology creating a product or service that benefits either all factions or individual parts of the property economy. So obviously, digitation and rapidly advancing technologies mean that the property sector is increasing rapidly. Around 40,000 jobs by 2039, it will increase by. And people are looking at ways to make sure it's easier and technological advances can be used in this state. We have the highest number of emerging prop tech companies in Queensland and Greater Brisbane than any other region in Australia. Forty-two, 42% of all prop tech companies are founded in Queensland. And Queensland Prop Tech Companies saw 17.2% revenue increase in the financial year 20 to 21. So the hub has been focusing on the southeast Queensland property sector.
Point of order to you, Councillor Khan.
What's a prop tech company, please?
I think that was a question, you may choose to interject if you would like.
As I said, prop tech for, and I'll read it exactly what I said, prop tech for those of you who may not be familiar, is an emerging technology sector creating a product or a service that benefits either all parts or individual parts- that benefits either all parts or individual parts of the property economy. So we are focusing on new and established property groups to adopt and leverage emerging technologies and further their capabilities. So being the epicentre of PropTech, obviously, with the capital in the biggest, most popular state for it, we thought a great opportunity was to have a launchpad here in the hub. We actually had a programme that engaged 33 new companies that were trying to pitch their technologies to 30 industry partners. We delivered more than 270 targeted industry development. To date, the six-week programme that we ran in the hub created approximately 33 jobs. It had supported more than $12 million in angel and capital investment into those prop tech companies. It generated approximately 56 deals and created more than 80 industry engagements. That is what we're talking about here in Shrinna Council, supporting small businesses to do better, to make our economy thrive, and make sure that we can go from strength to strength as we adapt out of last year's annus horribilis.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Adams, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Public and Active Transport Committee, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 18th of May, 2021, be adopted.
Second that.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 18th of May, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Chair. Look, before moving to the report before us, I'd like to acknowledge another major milestone in the Green Bridges Programme. We're moving ahead in leaps and bounds for all four green bridges now, having selected another two green bridge alignments. And yesterday, the Lord Mayor released the designs for a key component of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. So we actually released the designs for the new walking and cycling connections to the bridge. And we know that the bridge will connect into the existing transport network, and this is of great interest to local residents. So officers did extensive work to ensure that the connections to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, particularly on the Kangaroo Point site, serve the needs of the local community. For the Kangaroo Point side of the bridge, a new Main Street and Deacon Street connection will provide dedicated access for pedestrians and cyclists between the bridge landing at Scott Street and the eastern side of Kangaroo Point Peninsula via a new underpass which runs underneath the Story Bridge, where our existing works depot is. There will also be a lift and stair connection from the bridge to the landing at C T White Park and Riverside pathways. For the CBD side of the bridge, active travellers will be able to connect into the Citylink cycleway via Edward and Alice Streets, noting that it's currently a 12-month trial, as well as pedestrian and cycle connections to the Botanic Gardens Riverwalk via the Botanic Gardens. These new cycle connections will make use of access to the existing pedestrian and cycle network, and will ensure that access is safe and well-connected. I would encourage all who are interested in the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge to jump on council's website to have a look at the plans for the ongoing travel connections. The Green Bridges team will also be hosting two information sessions in Maloney Park at Kangaroo Point on the 29th of May and on the 5th of June as well. For those who would like to learn more about how these connections will operate, and I'm sure we'll have a strong turnout from Brisbane's cycling community who are very interested in those ongoing connections and how they will work. Now moving to two of our other green bridges, the consultation outcomes for the West End Green Bridges with the topic of last week's committee presentation. I already talked about the outcomes at length last week, but as a quick recap, 600 Coronation Drive to Orley Park has been selected as the preferred alignment for the Tuwong to West End Green Bridge, and for the St Lucia Green Bridge, Guyat Park to Orley Park has been selected as the preferred connection. It's been great to listen to and to read, Chair, some of the hype about these two green bridges that is attracted in the media last week. And it's safe to say that many people are really excited that we're now moving ahead with the Shrinna Council's programme for building green bridges. Two alignments now in the advanced stages of procurement, two more alignments selected, and one more to go. We know that the local community and the broader community really value their green spaces. That came out in the consultation report, certainly for both Tuwong and St Lucia. What the community has told us is they want the green bridges to deliver park-to-park connections, but without impacting on those parks themselves. So bridges that land into parks complementary with the green space. And council's very much on the same page. We want these green bridges to enhance Orley and Guyat parks, and this is the focus that council have now in developing the concept design for these preferred alignments. We're excited to be moving into the next phase for the West End Green Bridges, two in a whole suite of Green Bridges championed by Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna. Now, just before I come to the petitions last week, I'll just cover off, Chair, on the situation with the electric buses. And I think some of the questions that we heard in the chamber earlier today around Yutong and the four out of a fleet of 1,200 buses that we now have to trial electric technology were unfortunate. They were unfortunate comments. I know I heard at one point councillor Cassidy, who's now leaving the chamber, because he was leaving the chamber literally as I started talking about him, Chair, particularly when he screamed out Chinese Communist Party. It was really just an unhinged display today, Chair. And I think we all have to demand and ask more of this leader of the opposition when he comes into the chamber, not only in reading the reports and knowing that we had actually already awarded a contract to Yutong months and months and months ago, maybe in the significant contracting plan when we went out to market what we had actually specified in terms of our local buyer and our performance requirements for the vehicle. I just expect a little bit more attention to detail from him, a little bit more scrutiny. Let's not forget, the opportunity for councillor Cassidy to actually come across this whole thing. It wasn't anything to do with councillor, an announcement that councillor made. It was a speech made in federal parliament by Annika Wells based off a media release issued by the Australian Manufacturing Workers Union, who were upset that Yutong had ceased manufacturing of buses at our Eagle Farm site. Now, Chair, I don't know about you, but the Australian Manufacturing Workers Union is no friend of manufacturing in Australia. It was that union that almost single-handedly destroyed the car manufacturing industry in South Australia with their outrageous wage demands and unreasonable demands on carmakers. It was the unions that pushed carmakers offshore. It was nothing that we did, it was nothing that the Liberals did, Chair. So, you know, I would just say to companies like Yutong, you know, I would say to companies like BusTech, watch out.
Councillor Murphy? All right. Thanks, everyone. We've had a bit of fun with that. Councillor Murphy, please return to the topic.
I would just say, Chair, that if companies are getting serious about Australian manufacturing of local buses here in Brisbane or southeast Queensland or more broadly in Australia, then they need to stay the hell away from those unions because those unions are the ones who actually drove manufacturing, brought it to its knees in this country. And they are not the secret to bringing it back, I can tell you that. Chair, the other thing is here, you know, councillor Cassidy waxed lyrical about how Jim Sawley was a champion of local manufacturing. And let's not forget, Chair, that it was Jim Sawley who actually... And to his credit, he brought the C N G buses here to Brisbane. What a great local manufacturing success story that was. Except they started to explode. Those buses did explode. So I thought, you know, of all the examples that councillor Cassidy could pick to talk about local manufacturing, that might be one that he would have just left in his top pocket. But no, there it was. Now, wrapping up, Chair, last week, the committee considered a petition requesting council reinstate the Dockside Ferry Terminal and as an interim measure allow City Cats to stop at the Holman Street Terminal. As I've said previously in this place, Chair, the Dockside Terminal is older infrastructure. It's not compatible with modern City Cat vessels because of the height difference between the terminal and the vessel, the freeboard height. We've allocated $48.7 million over the next three years to upgrade ferry terminals, and Dockside is one of the terminals that will be upgraded. We're working our way through the design of the upgrade and are in the process of obtaining necessary state approvals at the moment. And once we obtain these, we look forward to providing an update to the community about construction timing. Now, Chair, in relation to Holman Street, this terminal is currently servicing cross-river and city hopper services. Unfortunately, City Cats are unable to use the Holman Street Terminal right now due to congestion issues. Having all three services stopping at Holman Street was causing too much congestion on the network, and it was impacting running times. However, this will be reviewed as part of a full timetable review that is happening this year, as has been stated in the petition response. I will leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks. I can't see the timer on my clock, so hopefully...
It's been reset for your two seconds. Now, hang on. There you are.
No, I can't see it, but anyway.
You can't?
It's here now, thanks. Cheers. Yeah, might speak briefly about the green bridges and then also about the ferry terminal petition. I'm obviously very supportive of the bridge projects. I'm excited to see that progress further. I just did want to highlight again, particularly for the Lord Mayor's attention, that there is an opportunity there to offset the lost green space simply by narrowing the road corridor immediately adjacent to the park. And that will also serve a dual benefit of creating space for some wider bike lanes without taking away further green space. And I've raised this with councillor Murphy, and I'll provide that feedback again through other channels. But I think early on in the process, the Lord Mayor was a bit dubious about my suggestion that it was valuable or worthwhile or feasible to offset the lost green space resulting from the bridge landings. But it's quite doable. We just simply have to be willing to narrow that roadway a little bit, and that'll essentially widen the park, create more public parkland that people can use and picnic in, et cetera. And it also has the added benefit of ensuring that when you narrow the road, that makes the road feel a safer and more comfortable space. And so parents who are letting their kids run around in the park are slightly less concerned about the fact that the park is next to a busy road corridor. So there's quite a few benefits to be gained there if council, as part of its green bridge concept designs, also identifies that opportunity to narrow parts of Hill End Terrace and Orley Street, et cetera. And I do hope the mayor will talk to councillor Murphy about that opportunity because I think it doesn't require acquiring any private land. It's simply a repurposing of existing public roadway, and it'll make more space for cyclists, better connections to the bridges, offsetting lost parkland and lost green space, and hopefully creating room for a few more street trees as well. So there's a lot of opportunities there. I won't go into detail about the consultation process that the council ran or the alternative consultation process that we ran, but I did just want to highlight that there are still a lot of local residents who aren't convinced that the bridges represent the best use of money. Certainly, there was majority support for the bridges going ahead, but we heard from a lot of residents who said that there were other higher priorities in terms of local pedestrian crossings, local bikeways, the need for more parkland in the local area, et cetera. I don't think it has to be an either-or. I think we can fix up the local pedestrian crossings and black spots and deliver the bridges. And my concern unfortunately is that the administration is acting like it maybe isn't either-or, and they're saying that we don't have money for a new crossing at Hope Street in south Brisbane, for example. We don't have money for further improvements to pedestrian safety and pedestrian crossings along Montague Road. We don't have money to do the Vulture Street bike lanes, but we do have money for the bridges. I think we have enough money for both. We just have to be a bit smarter about not wasting it all on road widening. But I just did want to really highlight for the administration that it's going to be very, very important to get those local connections to the bridges right, and that when the concept design for the West End bridges, particularly the Tuwong Bridge, is published, it would, I think, be advisable to also publish some details about what improvements will be made to the connections to the bridge. I know that with the Kangaroo Point Bridge, the bridge was sort of announced first, and the reference design was released. And it's only now a little while later that we've seen a separate concept design for the underpass and the pathways connecting to that bridge. I don't think that's an ideal approach. And I would respectfully suggest that if the administration's got the time, perhaps release the concept design for the bridge at the same time that you release the concept designs for the key links to get to the bridges. A lot of residents have questions about the future of Montague Road as compared to the future of Riverside Drive, and which of those corridors is going to be carrying the majority of cyclists, et cetera. So there are a lot of still unanswered questions that sit alongside questions about the design of the bridge itself. And those projects need to be conceptualised holistically. And certainly, I, as a local councillor, would really like to see a lot more detail about how council anticipates that people will get to the bridges. And I know councillor Murphy's alert to that need, and I just want to make sure it's on the Lord Mayor's radar as well and also on councillor McLaughlin's radar because inevitably, if we're going to be creating more, putting in more pedestrian crossings so that people can get to these bridges safely, and if we're going to be putting in more bike lanes, that's going to mean taking away a bit of space from cars. And the administration needs to be comfortable with that. I certainly am comfortable with that approach. But we need to go into this open eye that if we are to make it possible for people to safely access these important pieces of infrastructure, both on the West End side and in the St Lucia and Tuwong sides, we're going to have to repurpose a little bit of road space in order to deliver better bike lanes and maybe take away a few car parking bays in order to put in some new pedestrian crossings, et cetera. And that's okay, the sky won't fall in if we do that. Just turning to the public transport issues in Kangaroo Point, I just wanted to highlight that we lost the Thornton Street Ferry Terminal, and we lost the Dockside Ferry Terminal. Then, as part of the Story Bridge Restoration Projects, council also fairly unceremoniously and with little warning shut down the main bus stop for Beldon Street at the northern end of the peninsula. And it's that cumulative impact of loss of public transport services that's particularly frustrating to residents at a time when people think we should be improving public transport services. That seems like a logical way to develop a growing city is that we should be providing more public transport services, better services, more frequent, more reliable, greater coverage. Dare I say, more affordable would be nice. But instead of improving public transport services, this council has cut two ferry terminals and a bus stop for Kangaroo Point in a short space of time. Now, I accept that there are reasons for that, but the level of frustration in the community is very high. And I don't think it satisfies residents when council says, oh, the Dockside Terminal will be restored at some point. We don't know exactly when, but it's coming. Because there's no fixed timeline on that. It could be a year, it could be two years, it could be three years. Councillor Adams herself acknowledged previously that sometimes things can go wrong, and projects can get cancelled or timeframes can blow out even further. So I'm still a little nervous about exactly when the Dockside Terminal will be restored. Similarly, with that Beldon Street bus stop. I've heard from quite a few residents who say that that's been a real hard thing for them, losing access to that bus stop. And I don't mean any disrespect, but councillor Murphy, through you here, I think perhaps you're a little bit dismissive of the idea that it would be preferable to remove a few car parking bays so that the bus stop can remain there. I really stand by that, and I don't think that's a radical position or an anti-car position. Hundreds of people use that bus stop under Beldon Street. And for council to say, oh, we would rather take away the bus stop altogether than remove some parking bays temporarily... And I stress that, it's only a proposal to temporarily remove some parking spots so that we can keep that bus stop in there during the Story Bridge restoration works. I think that would have been a good idea. It's perhaps a little bit of a shame that that wasn't explored more closely. I know the administration is trying, and I don't want to give you too hard a time, but the pattern here is for repeated cuts to services. And meantime, there's no certainty or clarity about whether there'll be any improvements to public transport services going forward. I know a little while ago, there was talk of a city glider network strategy or something along those lines, and that council was exploring the possibility of a glider route along Main Street and over the Story Bridge. And I think it pertains directly to this petition. And I'd appreciate if councillor Murphy did have any more insights about the glider strategy and whether there will be a new city glider running through Kangaroo Point to connect from Woolangaba up to Fortitude Valley. I think that's a really good idea. I know residents are excited about that possibility. And certainly, considering that we're losing the Thornton Street Ferry Terminal and we're not getting that one back, an improvement, a permanent improvement to bus services in the area is probably merited, particularly when you consider that there have been literally thousands of additional apartments built in that area over the past few years. I heard councillor Owen talk about the rapid growth out on the south side, but we've actually had even faster growth in the inner city. And the great tragedy, unfortunately, is that a lot of those residents are still driving. What should happen in inner-city neighbourhoods is that as those areas get denser, public transport and accessibility improves, and people shift away from car dependency to other modes of transport. Unfortunately, in Kangaroo Point, as many as 40%, perhaps close to 50% of residents are still driving as their main mode of transport. And cutting public transport services is not going to turn that around.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy?
Just very briefly, Chair, just to respond to some of the things that councillor Shree said, look, firstly, on services, ferry services in and around Kangaroo Point, I've said previously in this place, and I've offered apologies to the residents of Kangaroo Point for the unplanned stoppage of ferry services to their suburb with the taking off of the Wooden Monohole Fleet, many times actually. I can only repeat that sentiment and assure them that we are working as fast as we can to restore services and upgrade those terminals, but these are long lead time items, you can't fabricate terminals overnight, there are land tenure issues that need to be resolved, so we're working through those as quickly as we can so that we can restore services to residents in Kangaroo Point. I would also just note, Chair, on the Beldon Street shuttle, this is a temporary shuttle which we've been running in order to provide a new, additional service to Kangaroo Point residents since we took the ferries, the City Hopper, away from many of those residents. We are moving that service, but I just note that in the previous debate, councillor Shree spent a lot of time talking to us about how we need to make more evidence-based decision-making. I can tell you that the officers looked at the cost benefit of removing all the car parks from the various streets, the three streets that would need to be removed from in order to get buses to be able to loop around, to move that service, and the cost benefit simply wasn't there. So, I would suggest that the way you approach car parking is far more from an ideological position of opposing car parking, car usage, car spaces than from an evidence-based perspective. And I understand why, I get that, I'm not criticising that, but I'm just saying, on this occasion, officers have made a decision based on the evidence that it wasn't worth it, it simply wasn't worth it to go to the trouble of displacing that many residents, that many loading zones, that many pieces of managed parking in order to provide the bus a place to turn around for a few months. So, they came to that decision independently of any guidance from me, and I back them every day of the week in that decision. Now, also, just to recap, I agreed and have agreed previously that Kangaroo Point, the peninsula, is fairly poorly serviced by public and active transport when it comes to walkability. There are not a lot of ways in which residents can walk around that suburb and get the services that any suburb of that many people needs, and the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge is the answer to addressing that. We know that at the moment, only one in eight residents uses walking as a mode of transport to get around Kangaroo Point, but over 50% have said, when we've surveyed them, that they would use the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge daily. So that is a huge uplift for active travel in and around the peninsula. So I think the best thing that we can do to provide residents an opportunity to say goodbye to the car, or maybe for a family of two or three, to lose one of their cars at least, is to provide that bridge, which gets them into the CBD, which allows them to use the services that are here in the heart of the city. So, with those few words, Chair, I think I'll leave it at that.
And I'll put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. The Infrastructure Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Maddock, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor McLaughlin?
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair, we've already had a brief preamble on this from councillor Strunk earlier in the L G B debate, talking about the Ipswich Road project, which was indeed, the Ipswich Motorway Upgrade Project, which was indeed the topic of our committee presentation last week. I'd like to commend the state government and the federal government for working on this upgrade, a $400 million upgrade project that took four years to develop, to deliver, but a great project it is indeed to provide necessary connection over the floodplain in that part of the city over Rockleigh. So, the other element though that was of interest to the committee, which was why this was worth bringing to the committee, was the manner in which the upgrade project included a council officer, a senior engineer, to be part of the project team from beginning to end, which helped council to develop and deliver assets as a part of that project that would help our road infrastructure, our road network as well. And that in particular was the adjoining road through Boundary Road Connection, which is now an important part of the approved planned solution in that neck of the woods, and Bioreports doing a very good job of delivering on what was intended with that design. But, I'll be brief, Mr Chair, I won't speak too much more about it, other than to say, great to see infrastructure being delivered at different levels of government, council plays its part, the state government plays its part, both of us supported by the federal government as this project was, and good to see it completed.
Further speakers? Further speakers? They're being done, councillor McLaughlin, I'll put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Davis?
Thank you, Chair, last week's committee presentation was on Brisbane City Council's Greenheart Fair, I spoke length about this fantastic event during question time today, but I will take the opportunity again to encourage residents to come out and about on Sunday to Seventh Brigade Park. I know councillor Hammond is waiting there and welcoming people in Marchant Ward, I know she enjoys hosting this particular event out her way, and certainly for those councillors on the north side of Brisbane, you know, come along, have a great time, and we're looking forward to hosting someone from the west in council and Mackay to come out as well. Mr Chair, the committee also considered a formal park naming of the playground in Sandgate Four Shores Park, Sandgate as Peabo and Dagwood Place, and a petition requesting that council install a basketball hoop and circle in Biame Yumba Park, Fig Tree Pocket. Now, leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, I just rise to briefly speak on clause B, this is the final step in the process to formally name the playground along the Sandgate Four Shore at Fifth Avenue, Peabo and Dagwood Place, in honour of two of Brisbane's favourite clowns and amazing advocates for organ donation. To say I've been proud to work alongside David Bissell, otherwise known as Dagwood, and my local community on this legacy project for Peabo and Dagwood would certainly be an understatement. So thank you to councillors in here and council officers for supporting this petition and bringing continued joy to my community.
Further speakers, councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair, I rise to speak on item C, and you'll be pleased to know I'll be very, very brief. Just with regards to Biame Yumba Park, it's a large local recreation park, and of course it includes the normal embellishments like toilets, playgrounds, significant lake as well, which is unusual for most parks, but that was a traditional owner's significant place. And in 2019, we did significant community consultation about what people wanted to see in and around Biame Yumba and in Fig Tree Pocket. And just for some background, people suggested things such as a community garden, more shelters, more park benches, better lighting, footpaths, nesting boxes, picnic tables, gym equipment, pontoon and a basketball court. So, I just wanted to put it on record that I do appreciate the community putting forward these ideas, we do have a lot of competing demands, and I look forward to working with locals to embellish the park further.
Further speakers? Any further speakers, councillor Davis? I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee, please. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I'm making sure I didn't miss the call this week. I move that the report of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday 18th of May 2021 be adopted.
And I second, Chair.
It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey, the report of the City Standards and Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, just briefly, the reason we're all rushing through our reports is because like an igloo here in the chambers, as seen by councillor Shree, is actually wearing a hat. So I just.
For interest, I have increased the temperature, so it should be warmer.
Okay, well, let's see how we go. So, I want to just, last week's committee report was the Illawong Way Drainage Project, it was a project out there in the Pullum Vale Ward, councillor Adamon has addressed the chamber previously about this project, so I'm quite happy to leave it at that. And there was also a petition, I'm happy to leave any of that debate to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item B, and ask that it be taken, Seri Adam, for voting purposes.
Item B for Seri Adam for voting, please proceed.
Yes, I note that council is refusing to remove the Kadaji outside the Lowban property in Robertson Street, Sherwood. This is incredibly disappointing, as the Lowban family are extremely concerned about the size of this tree and its adverse impacts on their safety. Their neighbours and many people in Robertson Street have signed the petition supporting removal of the tree, and it is a matter about which the Lowban family have written to councillor Marks on several occasions. Tonight, I'm going to read the submission that Mrs Lowban made to councillor Marks and to this council, and I urge council to vote against the response here today, which is to retain the tree. The petition written, this is Mrs Lowban's words, "The petition requests the replacement of the very, very large Kadaji for a smaller, more suitable native tree. There is no dispute about the health and vigour of the tree. The concerns are the impact of this weed tree on the environment, health and safety of residents and visitors and property. As residents of Robertson Street for nearly 40 years, we've observed changes that have occurred in the neighbourhood and the arboretum. The arboretum is a well-planned and restful place, there are over 1,000 trees, it's the fourth most visited park in Brisbane." It goes on to talk about, more about the arboretum. Mrs Lowban then notes, "Robertson Street provides street access to the arboretum, it's used extensively on weekends, Easter, Christmas and other celebratory occasions. Brisbane City Council has made a concerted effort to ensure the plants in the arboretum are appropriate and reflect changes in plant philosophy. The Kadaji, a North Queensland rainforest tree, is deemed by BCC to be a Class R weed. Council has an intent to reduce these weed populations. The identification of the Kadaji as recognised as a weed selected for removal is reflected information provided by a number of councils, including Logan, Mackay and many others." She goes on to say that "the Kadaji is a fast-growing tree and has previously been used as a street and garden tree further south in its natural range, particularly in the 70s and 80s. Brisbane City Council has an excellent site on weed identifications, and it's been active in ensuring the Kadaji is removed from in and around the Sherwood Arboretum. And remember, Robertson Street leads to the Sherwood Arboretum." She goes on to say that during the 90s, the Sherwood Arboretum had several large Kadaji trees that were removed by Brisbane City Council. Back in the 90s, Mrs Lowban approached council to remove the tree from her frontage at Robertson Street, but she was told it would not be removed. In around 2000, a Kadaji was removed from the footpath on Dewar Terrace overlooking the eastern end of the arboretum, and again, it was not removed from Robertson Street when she asked. In March 2021, there was heavy lopping of a tree in the Francis Lookout, a Kadaji tree, and the removal of unsuitable species, including poinsettiana trees, in Robertson Street, Sherwood in 2001. Residents believed at that time it was a commitment by council to plant more attractive and appropriate trees. All of the petitioners are residents of or close to Robertson Street, Sherwood. Some have lived in this locality for many years. Several of the petitioners are associated with the Friends of Sherwood Arboretum. Petitioners have well-care for and well-planted gardens. The petitioners have requested council remove the environmental weed species as it is a hazard and risk to pedestrians, vehicle drivers, private property, due to the large branches that fall off on a regular basis and the gum nuts that litter the street. They produce tiny, and this is me now, not Mrs Lowban, they produce tiny little balls that are very slippery and a trip hazard. They also produce a black soot, which is sticky, and it gets on everything. A weed species, Barbara goes on to say, "A weed species may include native plants that have been included outside their native range. That includes the Kadaji, which is a plant from North Queensland introduced into Brisbane. Weeds share a common set of characteristics that include rapid seedling growth, production of large amounts of seeds, vigorous vegetative growth, and an ability to survive in a range of environment." The Kadaji has all these characteristics. The problem with weed trees is that they compete for light nutrients, water and space, they compete for pollinators and seed dispersers. They are fast-growing and compete out native species, thereby reducing their populations and biodiversity. Unsuitability of the particular species for urban environment. Although the Kadaji has positive characteristics, it's unsuitable for planting in urban areas. It is a large tree of up to 30 metres in height and width. The flowers are fragrant, white and attractive. The states of Queensland and New South Wales both recognise the Kadaji, Corumbia torreliana, as an environmental weed, with Queensland acknowledging it is becoming a serious weed. Suitable alternative natives are available. Land care organisations advocate removing this weed tree. The impacts on the environment, economic productivity and health, it impacts on environment, economic productivity and health. Controlling the spread of the weed will reduce the threat to native vegetation. Arborists recommend removing them in Brisbane. The Kadaji releases thousands of seeds, the seeds are regularly washed into council drains, transported by the tyres of tread through fauna and dispersed through wind, rain and natural drift. The seeds regularly germinate across property and need to be removed by hand. Not removing this tree, the opportunities for the weed to continue to propagate are enormous. Unknowing residents encourage and allow the seedlings to grow. Preventing the spread of the weeds at their source is an important strategy for containing them. Seeds should be removed where they are found. Sooty fungus often grows on the tree, discolours objects underneath it, long branches break off and drop without warning. The Kadaji has an impact on the native bee populations. In conclusion, it goes on, it's quite long, "Brisbane City Council has identified the need to remove the weed trees from Brisbane residential areas. Planting appropriate species in their habitat and recognises that planting appropriate species in their habitat has positive benefits for local biodiversity. Removal of this tree, the Kadaji, will limit damage to buildings, to car, people, property fauna, and limit its spread and eliminate risks associated with the flowers, gum nuts, street sweeping, branch removal and tree pruning." It's an extensive submission that I've just summarised from the Lowban family. Sadly, council will not remove this tree. It is massive, it is inappropriate for its location, and it should be replaced with a native species, which all the residents in the street happily agree to, as does the Lowban family. There is the power under the Noel to do this, this tree is a weed tree. The fact that councillor Marks thinks she's got no power, and this council has no power to order removal of this tree, is absolutely fundamentally wrong. I urge all councillors to vote against this decision today. The decision today is to retain the tree, which is causing enormous distress to this family and to residents in the street. I support removal of the tree and replacement with a more suitable native indigenous to the area. It is critically important that we don't allow these types of weed trees to flourish. It's critically important that we respect the views of residents, this is a huge tree on their frontage, and I urge all councillors to vote against the decision today which retains the tree. I do not support this, I support the Lowban family and their neighbours' request for the removal of this tree and replacement with a more suitable native species, and I encourage all councillors here today to vote no to the recommendation before us.
Further speakers? Further speakers?
Just real quick.
Oh, councillor Shree.
Yeah, just on the petition, I'm obviously the always very dubious and sceptical of any attempts to remove street trees, so I would just be interested in councillor Marks responding to some of the issues councillor Johnston has raised, and understanding exactly why, because I did think Kadaji was invasive as well, but I'm genuinely interested in this conversation, because I think there is sometimes some value in retaining existing trees, even if they are invasive, because they offer a range of other habitat and land. even if they are invasive, because they offer a range of other habitat and landscape and amenity benefits. But yeah, I would just be keen to understand exactly what the thinking is here and why council is retaining this tree. And I'm genuinely not sure how I'm going to vote on this one, it sounds like a corker.
Further speakers? Further speakers councillor Marks.
Thank you Mr Chair, to address a couple of points that were brought up. Basically, the council arborist deemed that if a tree is healthy, it stays. It might be a weed species, as is a leopard wood. Those of us who have leopard woods across our wards that were planted some 30, 40 years ago. Bracken Ridge has a lot, Marchant has a lot, I have a lot, yeah councillor Adam has a lot. And Winham Manly, there you go. So pretty much every ward across the city has the leopard woods, which we all love to hate because they are one of those trees that cause a great deal of nuisance for us, our footpaths and our residents. But just because it's on the weed species list doesn't mean to say we go around removing them. We do try and look at a replacement programme where we can and where it's appropriate. But ultimately, it's the health and safety, the health of the tree that the arborists make their decisions on. And as a councillor and as a chair in this place, if you don't know that you cannot direct a council officer, can I tell you now, you cannot direct a council officer. It will put you in jail and I'm sorry, but I don't feel like going to jail over a tree, thank you.
Well, we'll now put the resolution for item A, all those in favour of item A please say aye.
Aye.
Those against please say no. Item A is carried and now for item B, all those in favour of item B please say aye.
Aye.
Those against please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of item B please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you and those against please say no and raise your hand.
No.
And abstentions, could you please raise your hand? Colax, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour, one against and four abstentions.
The ayes have it. Councillors, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee please. Councillor Howard.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landis, the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Howard?
Thank you Chair, we had a committee presentation on Resilient Clubs Support Programme. This programme is an initiative of council in partnership with City Smart and aims to future-proof Brisbane's community groups and sporting clubs by identifying and implementing practical options to improve the efficiency of water, energy and turf management. The programme is a free service for participating clubs. So we heard that the programme has two sub-programmes, water and energy efficiency and energy efficiency direct assistance programme. So the committee was shown the programme journey, including the process of club invitations and audits, water and energy infrastructure works and the coaching programme. It was a very interesting presentation and I know that we all asked lots of questions and gained quite a bit of information from it, so I would just recommend it to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers councillor Howard? I now put the resolution, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Those against please say no, the ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee please, councillor Allen.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 18th of May 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Allen?
Thank you Mr Chair, in last week's committee presentation, we were provided with an update on the economic stimulus portfolio of successful grants and significant funding contributions to council. With the global impacts of COVID-19, both the Australian and Queensland governments have made economic stimulus grant funding available through different programmes to foster growth, employment and economic benefit to the local community. The council is required to procure construction delivery through local providers. The infrastructure for economic stimulus portfolio includes five different grants. I'll quickly cover those, the Australian government had a total of $53 million in grants in the LRCI Phase One programme, which included $11.71 million allocated to 24 council projects. The programme of works need to be completed by the 30th of June 2021. The LRCI Phase Two included $40.7 million allocated to over 41 projects and these need to be constructed by the 30th of December 2021. In the context of Queensland government grants, which potentially total $14 million, we had a Works for Queensland grants of $5 million over four projects. We also had a Unite and Recover Community Stimulus Grant of $2 million, which was allocated over three council projects. There is also a South East Queensland Community Stimulus Programme where $26 million is available through a competitive bid process with $7 million allocated to council. We are currently in the process of waiting for an outcome on those submissions, which we expect by June 2021. And we also have three projects which were submitted under the Competitive Application Process at a total of $10.9 million. And construction of these particular projects will need to be completed by the 30th of June 2024. In total, we had 73 projects approved, receiving grants valued at $60.2 million. And we are pending the outcome of a further $7 million. In addition to the presentation, we also had a regular committee report on financials, the financial reports on receivables, rates and provisions and malls for the period ended March 2021. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Any further speakers, councillor Allen? I now put the resolution, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Those against please say no, the ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you Chair, I have two petitions, one on behalf of councillor Cook requesting council fund and develop toilet facilities at Hardcastle Park Hawthorn and one on behalf of councillor Griffiths regarding Millicent Street Trees.
Any other petitions? May I please have a.
Hello?
I'm sorry councillor Johnston, I asked and you didn't say anything. Do you have a petition?
You didn't call me.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I have a petition for residents of Sherwood calling for a street tree in Paul Street. I'm sorry to be retained.
Any other, councillor Adams.
Thank you Mr Chair, I have a petition on behalf of councillor Cunningham for development in East Brisbane.
Any other petitions? May I please have a resolution to receive them?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Strunk, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Those against please say no, the ayes have it. Councillors, general business, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? Councillors, are there any matters of ordinary general business, councillor Murphy?
Yeah, thanks very much Chair, I just want to talk about passing of Irene Edwards OAM. It's great, with great sadness that I share the passing of an extraordinary member of the eastern suburbs community today. Irene Edwards OAM spent a large part of her life serving the community with her great fundraising skills and getting beside people when they needed it most. My deepest condolences go out to her family and friends in this time. And a closed service was held yesterday to commemorate Irene and her incredible life. In 2018, Irene received one of the highest honours and was awarded a Medal of the Order of Australia by His Excellency the Honourable Paul de Jersey, AC, Governor of Queensland for her outstanding contribution to our state and nation. I was one of the very few people to be invited into their home to do the service in their house, which is not something that I understand regularly happens, but it's such a great honour that she was afforded. And Irene and her husband Ken played a major part in running the delivery of the invaluable Winham and Manly Meals on Wheels service for over 30 years. The Winham and Manly District facility delivers around 600 meals to around 140 clients in every week. As a Meals on Wheels volunteer, team leader, management committee member and historical officer, Irene has provided countless comforting meals, a patient listening ear and a friendly smile to all. As you might know, Deputy Chair, the Winham and Manly District Meals on Wheels moved into a new facility on Manly Road, the Wakerley District Sports Park in May last year. As chief fundraiser, Irene would have had a massive role to play in funding and delivering this $7.2 million project that will continue to impact and support the local community for many decades to come. Ken and Irene's dream for the new facility began in 1995 and they worked tirelessly over the next 25 years to raise over $1.5 million, of which Irene was a major driving force. Irene also spent a decade fundraising for the Brisbane East branch, I should say, of the National Servicemen's Association of Australia to support our local veterans. Alongside the Medal of the Order of Australia, Irene received the Medal of Merit from the Lions Club of Morton Bay as well as the Paul Harris Fellowship Award from the Rotary Club of Winham and Manly for her volunteer work. Irene's passion, her skill, her massive heart for people in our community is never going to be forgotten. The mark that has been left by this woman of service will have a lasting effect for many years to come. So we thank you Irene Edwards OAM for the constant joy, kindness and the many hours of volunteering that you gave us. My thoughts and prayers with her family and friends, particularly to her lifelong partner in crime and best friend Ken Edwards. I know that he, as we all are, will be missing her dearly.
Thank you councillor Murphy, any further business? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Deputy Chair, I rise to speak on Kubara Kindi. Kubara Kindi has, over the decades of service to the community, become a real institution in my ward. There are generations of local Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who've been through those gates on Beams Road and in many cases now enrolling their children there as well. Kubara was established in 1974 by local Aboriginal mothers whose children's rights to an early learning experience that reflected their diverse identities and cultures were not being met by non-indigenous services. Their goal is to provide a culturally responsive programme for the personal development of the diverse children of the community and to provide a safe place where Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children are celebrated. Kubara's story is one that would be very familiar to first Australians, one of struggle. Beginning in the backyards and church halls of Zulmy in the 1970s, this service received the recognition it deserved by the Sawley Labor Administration in 1996 when a 25-year lease was awarded on their current site. This followed a lot of work that was done in developing their community development plan in 1995. The work that has occurred at Kubara since has been phenomenal. They've had a constrained and challenging site at Beams Road, being a former sewage treatment plant, but have transformed that into a sanctuary of early learning and cultural education. As they have come to the end of their 25-year lease, they are now seeking a further 25-year lease. But this administration does not have the foresight of the Sawley Labor Administration unfortunately. They've been offered just 10 years and funding streams available to them are now under jeopardy. We ask the question, if a football club can be offered a 30-year lease funded by Pokys, why can't an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Kindi be offered a 25-year lease? They have a proven track record and strong plans for the future. So I wonder what is going on here Deputy Chair. Uncle Lewis Orchard recently remarked to me that one of his political heroes was Jim Sawley because of the work he did in advancing the interests of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders here in Brisbane. Labor has a proud legacy in this space and I wonder Chair, what the LMP's legacy will be at Beams Road.
Thank you councillors, are there any further items of general business? Councillor Howard, you have the call.
Thank you Mr Deputy Chair, Mr Deputy Chair, I also rise to speak about Kubara Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander kindergarten. We absolutely support renewing the lease on this premises. We've been talking to the Kindi and it's important, it is really important part of our local community. So I just really very briefly want to say that we will be supporting a 25-year lease, thank you.
Thank you councillor Howard, any further items of general business? I see no one rising to their feet, I therefore declare the meeting closed. Thank you councillors.